I call this meeting to order at the planning zoning special meeting to work on the POC document. At, I don't have the time, Matt.
It is six oh seven.
It's six oh seven. Could please rise for the pledge of allegiance to flag as our right by him. Thank you. Johnson, Jerry, that's okay.
Louis Fiori?
Here.
Linda DeGrae?
Here.
Virginia Higley?
Here.
Francis O'Leary?
Here.
Kieran Muggler? He's absent. Peter Falensky?
Here.
John Petronau is here. Vincent Garol, absent. Christian D. Antonio?
Here.
Nicholas LaFrenkis?
Absent.
So let the record show that there's seven present and three absent as we start. This might lead the groundwork down because we can imagine this, you know, I can't allow it to be totally open and it will never get anywhere. And we do want to get through this document as soon as possible. Again, we're not anticipating the document being done tonight. That's why we have another session Thursday night at six o'clock before the planning zoning meeting. But we do want to accomplish as much as we can. So I'm gonna control the conversations. If I think they're wandering off into direction that we can get back to later on, different topic, I'm gonna reel it back in. Hopefully, we reach consensus on things. There'll be times I'm gonna be asking for consensus and I'm gonna look around for nods ahead. There could be some issues that someone brings up or actually might need a show of hands vote. I'll make that decision on that based on the conversation. So I will allow some, you know, conversation to elongate on some issues. Because all seven of us, our opinions are very important and need to be heard. But I do need to kind of keep it going so we can move forward. So one of the things, instead of going, starting off going from page by page, we thought we would start off with those of you who have real issues with a particular section. You think a section is missing. You think we need to add a section in here. Do you think that something's been undersold in the section or oversold? And then we can, let's get those big issues out of the way, things, really major things you think we should add. And then we go back and we have time tonight to nitpick over some of the other literal, literal or items. Does that sound reasonable to everyone so we can keep moving along at a decent pace? Okay? Frank, I notice you don't have your document.
I don't.
Chris, would you, would you, you have your document up on your, would you, would it be something where he?
Yeah, oh, great, thank you.
That's much appreciated. Thank you. So having said that, I'm gonna look around the room first here to see if someone has something that they really want to add to the strategies or the layout of the document in general. You think we've missed some really important feature in the POC document that hasn't been addressed correctly. I know Kenny, you had a couple of things that sounded well on that line. If you want to start.
Sure, I can do that. Yeah, first of all, I'd like to say that I found the new plan really professional and pretty comprehensive. I think they cover a lot of things. And they use data, which is good. Even engineer, I like data. But I, I do have some specific things that I'm concerned about. I'm concerned about supporting the inclusionary zoning provision and the elimination of public hearings on site plan applications, those two items. The inclusionary one is the one where if you're building a housing development, you have to have a certain number of units that are affordable housing. Okay? I'm thinking that may deter some people from developing in our town at some point. Or not, you know, I think if we, maybe we were more, if we came up with a better strategy for affordable housing, I think that could resolve that particular issue. And the elimination of public hearings on site plan applications. I was uncomfortable with that. I, I think we really need to have public input on, on any of the site plans we have, even though, you know, some people may only have some minor issues, but I think it's important to have the public trust as part of our planning.
May I ask a question at this, at this point? Are you proposing that we require a public hearing for every site plan? Or are you just against eliminating the possibility of requiring a site plan?
I'm, I'm against the, the statement that's in the plan.
On page twelve.
Page twelve.
So, right, so basically.
That's a particular statement.
Reduce reliance on special permits.
No, I'm not, I'm not proposing now. We eliminate.
You want to retain the option.
I want to retain the option.
Right, okay, so you want to retain the option.
Because on page twelve, if I, okay, Ken, I gotta. But the answer, I kind of agree with Kenny. I don't particularly like the wording of that. Reduce the reliance on special use, special permit uses, limit or cease the practice of holding public hearings on site plan applications. And, you know, remove any impediments on non-conform uses in town. So that's a different area to discuss.
Yes, it's, it's under removing barriers.
Barriers for advancement.
So, so that was that particular one. And also, I would recommend the addition of strong wording somewhere. Stating that you should take action to revise zoning regulations to better accommodate affordable housing. I didn't see anything, correct me if I'm wrong, but I didn't see anything there that really strongly addressed that. Other than where the consultant was recommending that it's, it's an, it's a big advantage to us for development purposes.
So you're looking for stronger wording?
Yeah, I'm looking for stronger wording.
To accommodate.
Affordable and elderly.
Affordable and elderly, okay.
And, and because of that, you know, I'm fairly new member of the P and Z. But the things I've noticed that over the last couple of months, you might excuse that. Obviously, our regulation on specials of all districts needs to be revised and updated. It really doesn't cover all possibilities of refurbishment. And it should not just be limited to industrial zones, development of business in other zones as well, and the plan basically recommends that. Also, I think a specific local agricultural zone needs to be created. So that agriculture, which is going to be addressed directly for the farming community. And having agricultural zoning covered by an industrial zone, I don't know, that doesn't make sense to me for some reason. And allows industrial uses in the kind of coastal areas which may not be in the best interest of the community. I mean, and I don't think I already said that regulations don't allow much of housing. The other thing is I'm concerned about the implementation of this plan. I know this plan is a guideline and I think over the years, not everything really gets addressed properly. Actually, the major points, I mean, our consultant in this document, you know, the committee that put this document together, has stated that Enfield is very stagnant. And has made a number of recommendations upon improving that situation. So I think in the implementation part, we need to have a strategy and action plan driven by the P and Z to get things done. And we can prioritize how we want to, but it's pretty obvious to me that, that Enfield is, is basically, you know, just marching your step here. You're making progress. You have mall issues, you have Thompsonville issues.
So, I, I, forgive me for keeping interrupting, because I just wanted to make sure we have exactly what you're looking for. So, one of my recommendations was going to add in the development of an implementation committee. Oh, that's kind of.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay, excellent. So, you know, that is something that we could add in and a lot of times do that. Problem is, to the development of an implement, POCD implementation committee. And nobody wants to be on another committee, but it's one of those things that, you know, they could help keep track of who's implemented what task and where we need to go. So like, maybe they meet maybe biannually? Or maybe more at first and then, you know, it's like, okay, because the thing is, is if you don't meet often enough, you forget. Where were we? But if you meet too often, everybody gets burnt out. And this is a ten-year plan. So it's kind of.
And the committees have changed, and the committees have changed.
So, yeah, so I think so it's, it's, remember, everything that we put in here is a goal. It's not that it's going to happen. It's a goal and we're going to try to make it happen. So.
In case we can't do that alone, we need town council buying too for those goals, allow those goals to be met.
Absolutely, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I'd be a part of the committee, back in many subcommittees, specifically.
Well, you know, and realistically, every department should be following this POCD. And maybe it's just a matter of whatever the committee is, is reminding the department, hey, by the way, where are you on this, this, this? You know, you know, just a monitoring, a, a monitoring group.
Okay. One, one recommendation I would make is if we're gonna have a committee, or with any committee, it shouldn't be too big.
Right.
I went through continuous improvement programs several years ago as part of my career. And, and the recommendation is ten or less.
Yeah.
Although I didn't ever reach consensus on the committee system.
I'd say three to five.
Okay, it's even better.
Hey, a quick question for you. Kenny brought up the SDD. Should we, because we still have, even though the public hearings, because we have an open application, should we put out this, any discussion on SDD success or am I just looking, or is it okay for us to be discussing, you know, the hearing's still open?
The public hearing is closed, though.
The public hearing's closed, but.
You just haven't taken action.
I think what, what it's worth my opinion is you probably would be best to maybe not. If, if, I guess I would think that particular application is gonna be kind of brought to closure sometime fairly soon.
Hopefully by the end of the month.
Thanks. So if, if you can hold off for a few weeks.
Yeah.
So do we?
It's on my list.
It's on the list. So we'll skip over that. It's on the list. We, we know we're gonna come back to that.
Yeah.
It's not the POC. We're coming back to that.
Yeah, it's whether it's in the POCD or not, we're probably going to address it when we review the zoning regulations.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, and certainly I think we should work with the council and the town staff and make sure they're involved with the committees and it's, it'd be good for various departments, maybe have their own small committees or be representative on the committee. Not sure how it'll be structured. We'll be looking to.
Right.
You guys do what you can.
That's part of the task is you put these goals together and then it's like, okay, here's the goal. How are we going to implement it? And then you actually try to implement it and then you realize all, all the faults of how you thought about it in the first place.
Does anyone have any objection to anything that Kenny was mentioning tonight or any structural or any? I think Frank was before you.
He might have said it. I couldn't quite hear you, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The implementation, this committee, and I think there was maybe semi-annually, not having it too big or. I think we should talk about more how it's gonna be structured, how it's gonna go up the chain of command or who they're gonna answer to. And I think it should be a committee that meets, you know, maybe once a month. So it's frustrating, frustrating to see these, I've seen these, we all seen these documents, nothing ever happens.
Yep.
I'm gonna sit here and vote, you know, let's face it, we, nothing ever happens. So.
Well.
Yeah.
Very little.
Very little.
I mean, you know, we've seen these before.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I think that'd be something new. It's a good idea to have a committee to keep it going, keep it on the forefront. So.
So.
I think it's a good idea.
Everybody seems to be on board with that, so we don't have to resolve that kind of detail tonight on that.
No.
We're gonna be again Thursday, so think about what you'd like to see with that committee.
More of an active, I think.
Let's think, you know, you got a couple of days of sleep on it and we get back to that issue on Thursday. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah.
Chris?
Yeah, I just wanted to make just a quick add about the special permit, like about the wording. I think it's, I mean, what it says now is limit or cease. I think, I think the limit is, I think, a valuable addition. I think it's the cease, right, that's cease the use, you know, that's very definitive.
Yeah, I mean, that, that basically says.
Exactly.
Yeah, that was pretty strong.
Yeah.
Well, I, I had to be quiet there. I guess if I may, unless someone wanted. I have, I have a whole prompt, a whole paragraph period. I, I don't want to see a reduction in reliance of special permits. And I don't mind limiting the practice of holding public hearings of site plans. We do that, we did it on the one major one that had to be done. But I, I definitely take seesaw there. But I don't want to reduce the reliance of special permits. Okay? We, we talk about special permits for special events, so get that out of here. But I, I think you're absolutely right. I think special use permits and holding the practice on public hearings for certain site plan applications allows the public to interact with us. And I think that's so important. So we, we uphold what we're here for so that we have some kind of rapport with the public. If we reduce the reliance of special permit uses, then no public input. That's what we're saying to the public. We don't want their input. If we cease entirely having public hearings for certain special site plan reviews, we're saying we don't want your input. And personally, I don't want to go that route. So I don't mind, I don't want to reduce reliance on special permits, but I don't mind, you know, limiting practice of holding public hearings of site plan. That keeps us in check so we're not doing this arbitrarily every really nearly every time we want.
Exactly.
So that's just my personal opinion as your chairman. Not, not that, but.
May I, may I just comment from the economic development perspective?
Sure.
When the developer comes in, they want to know that they're going to be able to get in and out quickly and know exactly what's going, they're going to be required to do and having a special permit for things that typically are site plans is not as reliable.
Totally understood. Well, I was a, I'm sixty-eight years old. I've been doing this since I was twenty years old. Third generation has always been the balance between people who want to come in and build in the town and the people who live here. In the planning zoning commission, like all, you know, we should strike that balance.
I, I'm not saying I'm pro or con. I'm just trying to give other alternative thoughts.
I'm totally understood.
Well, we get a good application. It just goes through.
Yes.
If it's a good and complete application, even a special use permit, it goes through. It's when they're lacking things or when they want to do something that specifically is not allowed, that we have challenges.
Yeah.
I mean, you have to give a little bit for business, but you don't have to give away the store.
And we don't have to put round, square pegs through round holes.
Yes, so I'm in favor with Ken.
All right, did, did, did he also have something major? Anything? Frank, go ahead.
No, go ahead. Mine are just too quick then. Well, actually, just one thing. On the chart of population, back in, and I don't know what page, because I don't have my thing. But it showed back in the nineties fifty-something thousand people and currently we have forty-something thousand people. That's ten thousand people gone out of Enfield. But a lot of that population was the prisons.
Prison, that's right.
And I think we need to have something in here that shows that we don't have ten thousand housing units empty. It just, back in the nineties, the prison was counted and now it's not.
That's exactly correct.
Plus they've closed down.
That's exactly correct. When it was closed.
So I think that needs to be reflected in that.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's a way to take out the prison population from the nineties. I doubt it. But I think that, so people don't panic, like, oh my God, people are leaving us in droves.
I did mention that to Don when I saw his numbers, because I, I used to serve most, you know, I went through all those numbers because of the redistricting, potential redistricting, like Tom Kinsel, my public partner, and I spent months going through this. We talked to the state people about the numbers. And yes, that number that's used as the current population does not include prisoners.
Right.
Where before we probably had, I don't think we ever had ten thousand, but we had thousands of prisons that we used to be able to count towards our population here. And that's what allowed us to get certain state, federal extra grants because our population, some people they're saying are artificially inflated, but no, they, we're a town that are using our sewer systems and some of our resources. So we know, you're right, no longer do we claim the prisoners. And that's not really stated in his population numbers.
So I, I think that can be a very misleading.
Yeah.
If somebody reads this and they say, why did ten thousand, over ten thousand people leave Enfield? It makes this look really bad.
Yeah, I agree.
They put an asterisk.
Yeah, something in there says. But make no mistake about it, having gone through the redistricting thing, you know, there's very few households that are husband and wife and three children anymore.
Right.
And when I was growing up, four children. Now it's one or two. So we certainly have seen, even if we have that population change.
I agree with that, but that seemed like, when you look at it with, you know, kind of a new person looking at it with the blinders or no history of Enfield. That looks like, why did ten thousand people just flee Enfield? It's gotta be a bad place.
Yeah, we should add an asterisk.
Yeah, I think that's important.
Thank you. That's it, Lou?
That's it, hey.
John, you're quiet?
I just have a typo. That's it.
I'm taking it all in.
All right.
I mean, I, I, I agree with pretty much what Kenny said, you know, with respect to the affordable housing. Is it a deterrent to, for developers? Maybe, maybe not, but we also have to meet certain federal or state regulations to reformable housing. So we gotta be cognizant of that as well. So I, I, I pretty much like reading through this. It's, it's one of those things where I think it's, it's, it's pretty factual. I think Don did a nice job. He did a really good job. A lot of research. And sometimes, you know, the facts hurt. You know, there's some, some things in here that, you know, you know, and you bring to light, I think we all know in, in the back of our minds. But, you know, there, there's some work that, that Enfield needs to do to move forward and to get more on a positive note. I think the document does prove your job on, on covering it.
You know, we, we still have, besides, I'm sorry, besides POCD, besides we want to update some of our, not all, a lot of our regulations. Even though we're over the ten percent, we still have to have an affordable housing plan states requirement.
We, we have to have an affordable housing plan every five years. And not only do we need to have it, we need to show that we are implementing and utilizing it.
Right.
And if not, then we could be in danger of not getting discretionary funding or things like that.
What's the dual?
The inclusionary, um, work. See, I have a lot of notes, but so what, what, I just went to the CIPA conference, the Southern New England APA conference, and housing was the top bill. Everything was about housing. And I believe that what we can do is implement the actual plan within our POCD and call, this is our five-year housing plan and put in some strategies. One of the strategies might be that we might consider implementing inclusionary zoning. One of them might be that we might consider adding ADUs to our zoning regulations. So these are all different tasks promoting the first-time homebuyers program, which we already have, but maybe we try to expand that. So we, we have to put in things that we would like to consider implementing. But we need to show that we have implemented some of the tasks and show that it's, it's working. So.
And that's even over, over the ten percent.
It's in here doesn't mean you have to do it or you're going to do it, you know, per se. But it is, these are, you know, implementable, implementable items that can be acquired and completed. So you might not like inclusionary zoning, but it's actually one of the best ways to put affordable housing units in a, a master planned area that you wouldn't know which one was which. You'd never know the difference. So it's just, that's just one of those, it's just one of the tools that can be used, does not have to be used.
You know, another, another thing that, to, to make this a little bit easier reading for, for the general public or really anybody, is, I think it was mentioned at the last meeting, maybe you wanted, is to put in an acronym log, an index, because, you know, you find yourself.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, there, there's an acronym in, in, in chapter four for something. It could be MS four or Mandating. All right, and then you may not be reading that. You, you could be jumping over, over to chapter eight and you see, uh, uh, what's it?
Crowd or something.
Right. And then it comes, then it comes up again and then you're, you're, you're trying to scratch your head, what is that?
That's easily done.
So if that was done and also where there's a couple of, he, he notes a lot of statutes, state statutes. And, and if he would put those in, in a brief description as to why they, not the whole, I don't think he has to put the whole statute in.
Yeah.
But it's just a brief form as to what, what it is, as a short paragraph.
Right. Not a good general statute.
Yeah, you know, yeah.
Yep.
It's thirty G and so forth and that would be, it would just help the reader.
Affordable housing.
Yeah. Exactly.
Or you go, where you can go on the web. General statute, whatever, and have that page. And it's WW whatever and so if somebody wants to, what does that really mean?
Yep.
Go to it.
And, yeah, and, and I think that's a great idea to always reference a webpage if, if there is one.
We'll print it up here.
I think that's something that, you know, maybe staff can help with just filling in the blanks.
Oh, John's got it. Never mind. John's got it.
I printed it a while off.
Oh, I've got, I've got a puzzle of, of.
So everybody's pretty happy with the general format of what the committee gave us and the layout, the chapters laid out?
Yep.
And then no one's thought, excuse me, that there's a chapter missing or something misnamed? Has anyone, doesn't want to add another chapter?
I mean, I, I just want to add, just, I, I mean, we all got the email from before the last meeting from Melissa Everett. I think she made some really good points. And, and I didn't know if we were gonna end up discussing it too much last meeting. But these are like things that like I didn't, I didn't, I didn't personally think about, but I thought were, were interesting points. I mean, I'll, I mean, I guess I can just kind of summarize them just a little.
Yeah, please.
Yes.
If you could summarize and give them, did, did you like write out your?
No, because I, I just, I didn't, I didn't know if people had to.
That's right.
Do you have some there? They're, they're really important.
Like, there was, like, like the executive summary, which, which I, I thought was interesting. Uh, the good example of providing an executive summary at the beginning. And, and she like put the effort into like creating the example of that.
Yeah, on that part, that's the beginning, the first paragraph, Don has, I think, met, we haven't talked with Don, I think he's in the process of rewriting, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
The introduction, you mean?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, I think that we should be seeing something different on that soon.
All right, hold on. I'm turning transcription on. Perfect. There we go.
Um, I, I don't, I don't.
You want to start that again or?
No, 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 that's fine. It's, it's recorded, but the transcription will actually like write it out for us.
I, I don't recall, and I'll, I'll flip it over, but the chapter one suggests the title, where is the POCD and why do we need one? I, I don't recall what it is. Uh, there was actually, it was the mention about the growth, so, but from a different point in terms of what quarter is like stagnating. And she made the point, which I thought was an interesting point. And there's kind of a, a movement, I think, I think, Matt, you, you guys are probably familiar, I think it's like degrowth. I don't know if you've heard that. I think that, that's a term that's used, but it's, it's, it's basically not, it's basically the opposite of growth at all costs, right? So it's like we're, you know, we may be happy with like our population, maybe we don't want to grow significantly, so it's not necessarily a bad thing. So I think between kind of perspective, where it's not inherently a bad thing, we don't necessarily want to shrink, but we don't necessarily need to like grow like crazy.
I think her point, if I remember her point with the email she sent was, see if I can summarize, was that throughout this document, it pretty much implies that we need to grow and that growth is a good thing. And I think her general message, or at least in her opinion, might be shared by some, is that Enfield is, is slow and steady. Slow and steady Eddie, and we're doing some growth, but we're not going like this. There's nothing wrong with being slow and steady.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's an interesting perspective. I think, I think it provides some value. Because again, it's, it's, you know, though, I felt the point about the prison, prison population is really, really deep point that we need to include in the legislative plate. It's a pretty big impact. Um, there is, there is the point about having Thompsonville as a separate section after everything instead of connected with economic development. It made it seem as a, talking about it as a quote competing for investments sends a signal that this part of town is still marginalized. There's just concern about where that falls in terms of maybe integrating it with the economic development section.
So, so that's a good point. That's, that's pretty much some of the, one of the reasons why we're kind of here today. So that's whether we, do we tend to agree with that general synopsis? Or do we like having Thompsonville as a separate section in the document? I, I think that's a valid point, yeah, but I think, you know, we have to reach consensus where we, whether we buy into that or we're just saying, no, that's fine. We're gonna keep it separate.
I'm gonna go with Christian. I think we should begin with economic development. Thompsonville has been. Thompsonville has been something on the front burner in Enzo for years. We had a Thompsonville revite, and it was amazing stuff that was thought about and tried to be implemented, but we didn't really have backing, and people at the time weren't interested. But, um, we are seeing some people that are really interested in developing, uh, that area. We have La Mancha Center, it's gone. Strand's gonna be gone. There's businesses that wanna be there, and I think that's part of our economic development. If we can get that moving, maybe we can get somebody interested in the mall area. So, that's another economic development case that he talks about in this. So we brought them together, and people start seeing, oh, well, look, they're doing great things here. Put this basic piece of property that empty, buy this and do something.
I think Melissa's statement was to integrate, integrate chapter ten throughout the whole document.
Right.
And not have it separate.
Yeah.
So I take it you like that idea? Do you like that idea, or are you just voicing her opinion?
Well, I, I was previously mostly just voicing her opinion. I, I, I think, I think she does make a good point in terms of, uh, like, the, the implications of it, right? I, I think it's, it's important to, we wanna emphasize Thompsonville a hundred percent. I think it's a huge asset to the community. Um, but like I said, like, I, it's not something I thought about when reading, was like, oh, it's in its own section, it's kinda different. So, I mean, it could kinda go either way. I, I, I like the idea of combining it as, as a key aspect of economic development. So I, I would support that.
From a zoning standpoint, Thompsonville is, this has gotta be separated because it's just, it just doesn't conform.
T D.
So, so it's gotta be separated with respect to that.
But does it need to be separated in the P O C D?
Right, uh, and, and maybe that's what he's, he's trying to do, because it, again, from a zoning standpoint, it really is its own animal.
Oh, it doesn't.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's, it's a very tough thing to develop. To, to promote development, uh, you know, you gotta tear down buildings, uh, for the most part, like the Strand and the Nittany Road Center and so forth. Uh, to promote development, but everything else, there's not really a lot of vacant land there to develop. So, uh, who controls the property hinders or controls the development. You know, it's a lot of densely populated houses and so forth, and, um, you know, you're not, you're not seeing people that are gonna come in and buy a whole block of houses and try and do something, uh, with a brand new apartment building, revitalize. Just not seeing that, uh, it's, it's difficult, cause you have to control, uh, the property or control of real estate. So that, that's, that is a hindrance, um, but, you know, again, it's a start. What they're doing now with the La Mancha Center, um, and that touches my heart too. My father built that building, and that was like, uh, one of the first jobs that I worked on when I was fifteen years old. Um, as it was getting done, I went in there and cleaned it up and so forth, my brothers and myself, and so forth. We, we were the first ones that, that swam in the swimming pool. So, it really bothered me to see that thing come down, but, uh, anyway, uh, but it, so, so starts a new era. Um, and, uh, and that Strand, I think we all remember going there on Saturday afternoon and so forth, but, uh, there you go. And that, that starts at the fire, the fire station, you know, another good aspect. I need to get things rolling, so.
Would you like to see it, John? Do you wanna see chapter ten separate, or would you like to see it integrated within the other chapters? I think that's probably really the question, it's kinda on the table.
Yeah, I, I'm okay with having it on, on its own, cause I think, to me, it, it really focuses on, on that and, and it, it brings it to more life, you know, let's, let's go to Thompsonville, let's, let's kinda focus on it and may, maybe it can be extended some more and so forth, right? I, I think, I think it's, it's good where it is. I think that maybe some of it can be integrated elsewhere, but I, I just will leave it as, as a separate chapter.
Yeah.
And then get the focus there.
So you're gonna take it, you think the same way?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, I would think Don was concerned about it being lost in the shuffle. We really have a good shot at turning Thompsonville around now, and we want it to stand on its own so that people, um, are looking at it separately.
Yep.
I think the issue. I think, I think the issue is, can you separate it into the different paragraphs and still retain the emphasis on Thompsonville as, because of its uniqueness?
Yes.
Can we do that? I, I don't know, we can, we can do that. Spread it out to the whole document, and this kinda at least focuses on that. And so we have to be.
Yeah, I'd rather leave it separate.
Yeah, myself, no offense to Chris and Emily, but I kinda feel the same way.
Yeah, I, I, I don't feel super strongly either way. I think it was a valid point that I wanted to bring up and, and hear other people's thoughts.
Well, I was remembering to say the Strand.
Well, remember that, Kenny?
I remember that, yeah.
Yeah, 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 you probably do. I feel bad for the people who contributed money to that and never got their seat.
Yeah.
You're right.
I do feel bad.
Well, they may have gotten it up.
Oh, they may have gotten it at the last minute, but, you know, I'm assuming they probably didn't, and I might be mistaken, but I'm sorry.
We talked often about other committees, maybe this committee, about the corridor from North Main and Route Five leading to the mall to make a connection to Thompsonville, so maybe that's something we wanna focus on and make sure that we have that integration um, to the mall area, to Thompsonville. But it's been talked about a lot, so I think that's something we have to focus on, make sure that, uh, the zoning is correct there.
Do you think, do you think more like bike paths also and things of that nature?
Yes, there was all kinds of stuff and discussion around that, to make it connect.
Yeah.
Now that we have the rail stop coming, that was part of all the discussion over the years.
Right.
I was on both of the committees on the revive.
Yeah.
Um, those are the things that we want, we don't wanna lose in this, because that would be tremendous if we could, you know, bring them together. So then Thompsonville isn't gonna be alone anymore, we'll bring it in, but for this purpose, yes, leave it alone, but that corridor was always talked about, you know, and, uh, we have the C V S and the bank, now it's the Harvard Hospital Building.
Yeah.
You know, those are the new types of construction there, so.
Yeah.
Um, that, that's an important piece.
We have one, we have one lot still left, which we won't bring up, but hopefully someday it'll be developed before, King Street.
Yeah, I mean, um, that, that, you know, and again, with the rail stop now, bicycle paths.
Do we, do we, I don't think there's mentioned anything about that in the doc. I don't remember seeing anything about expanding, like, I mean, just using bike paths or.
That was one of them.
Connectivity was mentioned, and we are working on the traffic impacts.
Initially, when we brought, initially when we brought Don on, and I think we got delayed obviously because of COVID, but I had mentioned that piece, that stretch, and to, uh, make sure that we, you know, don't forget about that.
Yeah, yeah, good point.
Yeah, if I, if I could just add to that, I would, there is a strategies for improvement section at the end of Thompsonville. So even if it is scattered throughout somewhere, like, there is definitely a mention to complete streets, but we can build that connectivity as, as a strategy specifically for Thompsonville.
Yes, the target investment areas, so, they're, they're all key.
Yeah. So it sounds like we're.
The mall, the mall and Thompsonville are probably more key than others, but I, I shouldn't say that out loud.
So it sounds like consensus majority, we're just gonna leave it and please go back. Maybe take a look and make sure that piece you're looking for is in there.
We talked about it with Don, right on, right up to the beginning.
But I gotta, I gotta say that the, the recent road improvement plans in downtown Thompsonville, what they've done, um, a lot, a lot of it is, done a lot to, to, at least aesthetically, make it more appealing. You know, you have new roads, new sidewalks, new curves, uh, and if they can maintain that way and people keep up their prop, hopefully it transcends people keeping up properties, but, but it is noticeably different driving through those streets. Big difference rather than the old streets, the old torn up sidewalks that were just, you know.
But you trip over.
Yeah, exactly.
Storm drains with the covers broken.
Yeah, but it really, it's refreshing, you know, to, uh, to see that. I, I think that that helps start the, some of the redevelopment to the world.
Yeah, yeah.
I think everybody enjoys it.
It's just a tough tail off of that, so I, I was chief at the time when that started down there, and, um, so the infrastructure is complete as well. But you don't see the ground.
Yeah.
And I was just fortunate, it was timing, I was able to oversee the complete replacement of all the water mains.
Yeah.
We went from places with four-inch water mains, twelve-inch water mains.
But not the sewer system.
Well, no, the sewer system was, if they found something, they fixed it. Um, but I know they hammered everything, but infrastructure is very important, you know, and there is, you know, a twelve-inch water line that runs right to, uh, North Riversdale, Northern Main, just capped there, you know, for future development. And, you know, that all happened because of the roads, and, you know, the big thing is when the roads are open, you know, you get in the ground, and, uh, they were aggressive, and so all of that has been completed. So not only the aesthetics, the infrastructure is ready for development.
We still need, there's still potential sewer, septic sewer type issues. There's some old clay pipes still being used in some of those streets that haven't been addressed, but.
Anything that was exposed when that water main replacement project was going on was fixed. But I guess, um, there's a process, and John, you know, of re-sleeving, so sewer lines now, they can hammer them, re-sleeve them. Otherwise, fully not to dig up the road, I guess, right, um, so.
Of course, that makes the damage smaller.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent on how that works.
John, I'm not, I'm going back a few years now when I reefed on this, some of those old clay pipes you can't sleeve. I mean, they're afraid to sleeve.
Yeah, they're a little bit delicate.
Yes.
They have to be flinked out and ground out first, and, and those are difficult. Those should be replaced.
Replaced, yeah.
And, and some of your old systems are combination, they're, they're sanitary in storm.
Right.
And then they needed to be separated.
A lot of it was separated, and probably still some remaining.
But, but that's what they're fixing as well.
Unlike Springfield.
Yeah.
No, no, I'm kidding you. I'm not kidding you. You know what happens when you have a big rainstorm in Springfield, because they're not separated? Guess what gets into Connecticut River?
That's what they're working on it now.
Yeah, they're putting a pipe in.
Yeah.
Alright.
But anyways, so the infrastructure, this is the W.
I need to get it in.
I think we're, we're ready to, um, we're ready to accept any, any type of.
I'm sorry.
We're ready to accept any type of new construction or structure or modern day, uh, structures, apartments, mixed use. The area is definitely ready to, to do that.
Yeah, absolutely. Alright, any other, any other major issues? I'm looking around the table, cause now, now, not that we can't go back if you guys think of something, don't get me wrong. We have Thursday night, and if we need another session, we can always do it in the next, uh, meeting also, but is there any other major type, um, thank you, Chris, for bringing up Melissa's stuff. I forgot to print that out, but thank you so much. Sure she's appreciative too. Anything else of, of major, um, consequence that you wanna chat, talk about? Alright? Fellow staff, anything we missed from a major standpoint? Anything you guys wanna add that we should, uh, we didn't, we didn't discuss from a chapter or philosophical viewpoint?
The big thing is, I think that we really need to work on what we consider a good, um, affordable housing plan that we can put in here so we could adopt it with that. And I can provide some outline for the commission, and then you could, you know, decide on which, which items you'd like to work on and, and just, we'll do it that way, you know, a lot of towns have gone out and done studies and whatnot. Well, we just had Don Pollin do a major study, and he's provided the information for us.
Yeah, plus we, and plus Enzo at least has track record with some affordable housing in our community. We wouldn't have that.
Exactly.
What, you know, is, you know, since we're here, and, and most of us are here, um, except for our three members, I wish they, they, wish they were here, we can discuss some of those if you'd like. For instance, um, I think they're gauging comments, or at least perception for my fellow members, about doing multi, multi-use buildings, which, which is part of the plan.
You mean multi-multi-use buildings, or just multi-use buildings? Sorry.
That's okay. So we've, uh, we've discussed doing that in our, in some of our B R zones. I think that's been open discussion. We all know where, what we're implying here, where we wanna go with that.
Yeah.
We, I, I wanna say it one time, we know down the road we do need to work the regulation. I think that's part of the implementation plan. I'll give you another example, was that application that had the and on it. Uh, help me out here, Matt, you and I, it got withdrawn, it's going to Z B A now, but because that regulation had the and on it, we basically stops any multifamily homes duplexes from being built. So instead of the regulation being or, it has and, so the applicant has to meet both qualifications, which.
Which made no sense.
Well, I, well, I know why it was put in there, yeah. But it doesn't make any sense in today's day and age, where we need to go with our affordable housing now. That's a regulation that needs to be changed, so it's or.
Yeah.
So the one or the other.
Or, or maybe we have a whole different criteria.
Criteria, right.
Well, there, I'm in the trouble, but something, and I had the advantage of somewhat being kind of an outsider to a degree, coming into it, and when I look through the records, I see things that just, to me, just don't make sense. They maybe made sense at some time, for some reason, but for instance, we, we require full basements. And, well, in certain contexts, we do.
Yeah.
And, and, and it just, there's, when you're talking about affordable housing.
Yeah.
It doesn't seem, from a zoning perspective, it just doesn't seem like there's a nexus between what we're trying to accomplish in the big picture from policy perspective and the tools that you have to kinda do that. So, those, we can probably pick off half a dozen of those low-hanging fruit, if you will, and discuss them and see if we can kinda include those kinds of things as well.
Is there any non-consensus with that? I'm looking around.
Uh, I, I, I have a, a comment on that. The basements, if, if you open a single-family home and, and you're not recording the basement and you're for housing, that's, that's one thing. I, I guess that's fine, but when you're doing multifamily housing, uh, and I know this firsthand, uh, we did a project that was, uh, thirty-two units, no basement. Because no basement, there's no storage.
That's the reason we have.
And, and the owner developer just could not, and, and to this day, still has a lot of difficulty renting those units because of that. I mean, you know, people want stores, they want their, their winter stuff down there, summer Christmas things and whatnot. Even if it's an eight-by-ten cubicle, uh, but, uh, but that, that basement area does allow that, and, and, you know, there is a value to it, and I know it's none of our business really to get into that, but, uh, 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 there, there is, there is a good use for basement, multifamily, um, in, in single-family homes. We have two neighborhoods that I'm aware of. One, uh, one off of, uh, Brainerd Road across from Brainerd Park, and then there's one up on Lehman Road. Those two developments are slab-on-grades.
Yeah, some of them.
No, I'm not, maybe not. But those houses are all slab-on-grade, I don't know for what reason or why that, that was like that, but, um, I, I don't see really an issue with that. They have a mechanical room that's upstairs and, but, you know, again, there, there's, there's no storage and so forth.
They end up putting the sheds out.
Yeah, but, you know, to promote affordable housing, yeah, is it a little bit cheaper to build, so forth, five hundred? Yeah, sure, it's, it can help, uh, you know, maybe there's a certain requirement, uh, in the regulation or billing code, we can have in there that, that promotes that, but they'd have to meet certain other things. I don't know, something, something.
Well, the idea is that if someone to go through and pick off some low-hanging fruit for, at least for us to discuss going forward. So I appreciate if you, if you, you know, could start on that.
I guess my question is, do we need to do that, the P O C D, when we're about to do the zoning regulations?
No, probably not, yeah, yeah, probably not.
I mean, you know, if there's something that is relevant to the long-range plan, then maybe we need to, but I think, you know.
I was only bringing up in the context of the affordable housing.
Right, yeah.
And if there's things that we can throw in there, then.
Yeah.
Check some rules, right? Versus the reg amendment part of it. Yeah, ultimately, you know, those required hearings and applications, you know, public input and it's consensus is at that point, that there are strong objections, then it doesn't get adopted. Cause, you know, it's distinguished between the policy document and the regulations, and the two.
But I like the idea of us trying to add something into the more to the affordable housing, as you were saying before, where we could, we could pick that piece up and use it as our affordable housing plan.
Right.
So if we can, I think a little more choose.
Put it in there as, this is our proposed and adopted affordable housing plan, and here are our goals. And here's, here's the tools that we're going to be utilizing and trying to promote.
Yeah.
Um, and like I said, we could just get, give you a long list, and you can pick and choose.
Right.
We can make some recommendations as well.
Sure, please.
So, you know, these are the easy, this is the low-hanging fruit, add, add accessory dwelling units. That's a low-hanging fruit. It's easy, it's not.
And that's a standalone, those are standalone, they're not the in-laws.
Conversation on that.
Well, we, we exempted ourselves.
Right, and we exempted it, but we also, prior to that push, we had long conversations about it because we were rewriting the Thompsonville and, and pretty much.
They don't necessarily want them.
The consensus was across town.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we had a public hearing.
Yeah, even at public hearing.
So in that affordable housing plan, is that one of the statutory items we have to look at, the accessory, the, develop a dwelling unit?
Yeah.
No, you don't. Um, uh. I went to a session and there was like five things that most towns are adopting, and that was one of them. So, but I, we will get you a list.
Yeah, please.
It was um, it was, it was pretty much obvious that the residents weren't for it during public hearing.
Correct.
Because the way it was proposed was, and this was the example, you could have a single family residential building and next door can build another building on the same lot.
Right, but without notice. So if you guys wanted to make it a special permit, although we're trying to prevent that, you can make it a special permit, and that way the, the neighbors are notified.
It just wasn't popular.
Have you set the person for building in one place and allow them in another?
I guess if it's a special per, I mean, you pick the zones that is permitted. If you don't want them in Thompsonville, you don't allow them in Thompsonville.
I want an R E D.
If you don't want them in R E D, you can't have it in R E D.
I want an R E D.
Yes, R E D. And, and another time, we, this is, this was not the first time. Prior to that public hearing, we were discussing the granny pots.
Yep.
Yep.
And that's what they were called.
I know, I know, I know. And those, you know, these are, these are like, you know, proposed and actual mandated.
I know.
Changes unless you, you know, opt out and it was.
Which we did, we're out, we're out.
We opted out, but I think everybody was opposed to the fact that anybody could put these in if they met this minimum criteria and. They would disappear and there'd be no notification and, you know, all of a sudden I'm looking into my neighbor's accessory dwelling unit and they're staring in at my bedroom and.
But two, two planners, the, for you, and it was like, no, we do know.
But you know, look, look at the hypocrisy though.
I, I.
Think about our zoning regulations to, to, to put in an in-law apartment, okay, and look at that. And then the restrictions on that and what we impose on that. And, and then you want to do that? That's crazy. That's a slap in the face.
I get it. I totally get it. I was, I was, I was not for the, the way the public act was proposing to do it. I didn't think that was right for slamming it down towns throats. I. That's my personal opinion.
I, I think.
But I do think that they can be um innocuous. I mean, they, they, you, you won't even know that some of them are there. So, I, I mean.
There, there's a lot of space between what the state's regulations were and what we have today.
Right, there's, yeah, it's, it's as far away as possible.
And some of those.
Right now, they don't allow them.
Yeah, but in Thompsonville, when we were looking at that and because there's, it'd be a great place for, people could have a, they have a detached garage, they could build up. It's not impacting the impervious surface and you could put somebody back there.
And you're saying that, you know, it'll have to be a public hearing, right?
Yeah.
That's what you're saying, but could you imagine the emotions in a neighborhood?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, look what we just went through, look what we just went through in this community with the warehouses. Could you imagine somebody proposing to build another building, another house?
Yep.
In your yard, in a neighborhood? Do you know, I mean, the emotions, the emotions would be uh, be up there. I, I think we'd be starting, I, I, I mean, I don't know if that's somewhere we want to go. I mean, I don't think that's somewhere we want, we don't want to do that in this community.
Where I probably could put one in and they'd never know it was there.
I agree with Frank.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's a good way. I mean, I think we'll have too much.
So anyway, so.
We'll get back to that.
You can have, you can have this debate and we will give you the options and kind of what they are, like inclusionary housing and, and the, the ADUs and. The um first time home buyers and working with developers and nonprofits and things of that nature. But in the end, you're going to have to show that these are going to work and that you actually have implemented some of them.
So we need to be careful what we put in. We don't think we can implement it. And if we're not willing to at least start the ball, and we need partners.
Yep.
Some of this, we need, we need council support, we're gonna need building department support. And if we can't believe when we get to that point, I know we're jumping ahead, but when we get to that point, we get to this list and we wind it down and will it down. It better be things that we're willing as a commission.
That's.
To go forward with and also try to have council buying and other town manager buying, the whole thing. It can't just be us putting in a document and then putting a document away. Because that's not how the state statutes are written anymore.
Public safety should look at it and think.
In public safety, yeah, I mean, it.
Public safety.
I mean, everything comes into play, utilities.
Yep.
And, you know, this is, you know, parking.
Yeah.
We have parking.
Yeah, so that document can't be just like if we were doing something like, well, we wish the town to improve Brainerd Park and we put the, and we put the document away and forget about it.
Right.
When we.
This is something that will need to be addressed.
So we need to be careful and consider what we've put in here is what we want to see implemented.
Yeah.
And then we'll put it into zone, right?
Yeah, yeah, you have to.
That would be the, the purpose of this. It's okay, so now we're going to implement this housing plan and we're going to adopt these regulations into our zoning regulations such that. Multi-family or ADUs or whatever it is, inclusionary is permitted in wherever.
Mr. Chairman, I'm correct. Anything in the P O C D, if it doesn't get adopted into the regulations, it's not, the P O C D is a guide.
It's a guide.
But the housing plan is not a guide, it's, it's a requirement.
Right. And when Lori said she was going to take our housing things out of the P O C D and, and pretty much plop that into our housing plan.
Yeah.
That's the intent here.
Not the regulations.
Not the regulator, do we have to do that after?
Things that we would need to implement. So that's what the housing plan is, is we are proposing that these items will be implemented to promote. Multi-family housing, affordable housing.
Yeah.
Equitable and inclusionary.
So when you look at the P O C D going forward now over the next few weeks, when you get to the housing part. If there's things that you have agita about, you don't think we can implement, and talk about it against, we can remove it from the P O C D if so desired. Because that's going to be our guide for building the housing plan, which will relate to changing the regs, if we have to.
And then anything that goes into the regs, we'll have a public hearing.
Yes, it has, has to have a public hearing.
Oh, yeah, any text amendments, absolutely.
Absolutely.
The, the point here is, we have to do this housing plan, we may as well get it adopted with our P O C D as opposed to having a whole separate process of. You know, going through public hearings and, and, and hearing about it and talking about it, because we can talk about it with this plan and actually have it as part of it.
Two birds and one stone.
Yeah.
Think of it that way. But which means we need to be more cognizant about what we're putting in here from the housing plan. Okay, so everybody kind of understand that going forward, over the next couple of weeks? That makes sense, everybody?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else on a major level? I mean, one of the things, I, I brought it before, I, I, I missed, there was no mention in Don's thing about light. And the reason why I would like to see it mentioned or made, not just in Tville, I mean, generally speaking, I'm not sure if it's.
Cross town.
Get cross town. And, and I.
We have, we have light.
I know.
Officer, we used to have two or three or four dependents on the month.
Yeah, so I just think that, I just think, I, I, just being around Town Hall a lot and I, I just want to make sure that that doesn't start disappearing. So I, I just think somewhere in that, we need to find a spot.
You just want to mention some.
Yes, yes.
About maybe the C click fix, because people will, I keep, you know, but I walk a lot. People complain to me, oh, did you see, and I'm like, okay, and I'm doing C click fix. And. I think C click fix is great.
It is a good tool, yeah, well, it's basically like three one one.
I just don't want it to, I don't want it to fall off the cliff.
Okay, I'll make a note.
Because it isn't, I, I think it's very important to a large, large segment of the community. It's part of economic development's general cleanliness of the town, so.
We do have light enforceable regulations.
We do, right now, there's only one person in light. One.
Never mind. Because we don't want the town.
Yeah.
I mean, it changes. I, I mean, in the, in the time that I was here.
Yeah.
In the time that I was Director of Development Services.
Yeah.
I had two, then three, then one, then three, and I think they went up to four. And down to three, and then with the new management and, and reorga, reorganization, they brought it down to one.
It's important though for businesses. Businesses don't want to.
No, 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 please, no, I'm agreeing.
Oh, yeah.
These are as far as long to.
Make sure that we're gonna continue it.
That has light because the perception is prime.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Can't lose the importance of what the jobs those people are doing.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, it's just.
And they're working with enforceable regulations, is that going to have action?
Yes.
They're there already.
Yes.
Right, and we have um hearing officer.
Yep.
So things are heard, so.
Never mind. That must be why they're, they're, they just sent out an R F P for um people to mow lawns and stuff for light.
Well, yes, that's, that's exactly what's.
That's part of the program, the dream and lean.
Because this way, this way, Mark Aris, people don't have to do that, that's why they sent that out. Yes, absolutely, that's part of the blade, yes.
Yep.
The other thing was that we don't want to cite the, the fact, and I thought, I don't know how we can word it in there, because we don't want to seem like no one's doing economic development, because that's not true. But I think there was a few of us that wanted to see um.
The Ray Warren.
Yeah, I'm not sure, full time, but more, more dedicated hours towards economic, I don't know how, I don't know the proper word to word that without offending anyone.
Economic direct development.
Like the dedicated hours.
Director, coordinator, whatever. And, and my thought is, there should be somebody that even part, part time should be focused on Thompsonville, just Thompsonville, as we have in the past and like as we're moving to. It's been, it was successful for a while and then things happened and. You know, everything gets reorganized and, and you know, new, new people and so. But yeah, there's always a ti, a possibility to bring things back that happened and su, you know, successful in the past or anything new, so.
Alright, so I think we're ready to start to go through very quickly through the document. Um, and um, you know, if we get hung up on anything, we'll get back to it. Let's just go through it quickly. If you see anything you want changed, a paragraph, I, I know I have some things highlighted, we'll just quickly go through it. Let's not get, so we can make some progress.
We go through page by page.
Yeah.
Laurie, you have another hard copy you want?
I do, but I need the notes, so um.
I gave online to uh Don last week.
Um.
I just came from work right here, so I didn't have time to.
Here, you could use this, but I need it back.
Oh, sure, no problem, please, thank you.
So the first thing, I start this on page three, I'm gonna delete that up for you to clean this up.
Yeah, 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 that's, that's, that's like.
Yeah.
Really, really, really low hanging.
That's really low, low. Um, as we already mentioned on page eight, uh, Don is reworking the introduction, so we'll wait to hear back from him and maybe stab at it. Uh, we might still want to go back and have him change some things, but let's give Don a chance to rework. He's rewording John the introduction. He got our input. Yeah, that's, that's, that's what I was like I said, I know.
So I actually had a number of changes to the executive summary aside from that first paragraph, but it was mostly. Um, I noticed that some of the um implementation strategies weren't included, um, so I've just um suggested that everything be included in this summary.
Well, I found there was some redundancy. Do we want to keep the redundancy?
Um, if it's redundant from one section to another.
Yeah, because for instance, the agricultural lands and farming part has some of the same things that are in the agricultural conservation preservation part. Do we want to leave them?
Probably, because they're two different sections and they just overlap, but um, we'll have to look at it a little bit.
I'm, I'm moving on, and if you guys, please stop me if you have something on the pages you want to change. I know John has some yellow tabs. Kenny, are you all set going forward?
Well, I talked about the agriculture permission, that's on page nine.
Okay.
You know, the agriculture permission, it's talking about the dedicated agriculture zone.
Yeah.
Something, something like that fits in there at the top of page nine.
He talks about zoning regulations.
That's such, right? Oh, that's supplements.
Well, this is.
Oh, 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 that's, that's actual.
I marked up the actual page.
What page, Kenny?
Page nine.
Page nine, is that it? Which, agricultural lands and farming?
Yeah, zoning regulations, like.
Oh, yes, yes. Should review the zoning regulations and the vice plan zoning.
You know, the view should be what I'm saying first.
Yeah.
To dedicate themselves.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. I'm moving forward. Am I going too fast?
Nope, just tell us where you are.
Okay, anything on page ten, anybody? Okay, stage eleven, what is missing middle?
Missing middle is kind of the, it's not the lower lower um.
But when you look at this graph, we have plenty of missing middle. That's why I had highlighted.
Four bedrooms.
Yeah.
It's, it's in there later on.
Yeah.
In the document.
Okay.
But I was the same issue, I'm like.
When you look, when you look at this graph, which I thought was fantastic, you know, I've never seen the numbers out of that, well, that data, like Kenny says, is great. When you had that graph of how many units for the high end.
Yeah, yeah.
How many units for the low end. As you can see, it's on the high end and the low end where we're missing now units.
Right.
And Don made a perfect choice on the low end. He basically said, wow, that's state and federal, it's kind of out of your hands.
Yeah.
So we're, I hate to say this, because it's not really affordable housing, where we're really missing, and it feels on the high end more than many fields. We're not really missing anything in the middle, so that's why I'm surprised we, he has missing middle here, when clearly the data shows that we're not missing any middle.
It's, yeah, like, number of units when he says missing middle. Like, we have like one bedrooms, two bedrooms.
Right, exactly.
And then we don't have like three, four.
Three and four bedroom.
We have.
Oh, definitely, okay.
Four, three, four units.
Right.
I was like.
Okay.
We have, we have a lot of the multifamily.
Right.
The large multifamily.
Yeah, but we don't have that smaller.
Okay, sorry, so I just missed something, I wasn't pulling it in.
Two unit, four, four unit. Other unit, smaller, you know what I'm saying?
Unit, yeah.
Yeah.
As opposed to. Yeah, as opposed to, you know, six, sixty apartments instead of two or three or four.
But that's discussed later on and.
Okay.
Yeah, so you've got to remember, all this, this is the summary of the.
Right, yeah, about it. Right, right. We already talked about um. You know, creating a permitting process that's swift, simple and certain, reduce over reliance. On, on page eleven.
Okay.
We've reduced over reliance on special permit uses for multifamily residential mixed use developments. That carries over to page twelve right at the top, remove barriers to investment, which we already discussed earlier. Thing I think a lot of us like to see that toned down. Does it really fit with what we want to do here in Enfield? Um, understanding we do want to reduce the process or make it a little more simpler and swifter if po, if possible, and if it makes sense for this community. Those are just my inputs, I had those highlighted. You know, I think you guys ever hear my earlier comments. And I don't, I mean, you guys would know better than I would, especially the people who've been on the planning zoning a lot longer than I have in Kenny and Chris. Removing the impediments of non-conforming uses and vocal crimes in council area. I thought one of the commissioners already mentioned to me that you already did that. I mean, we.
Twenty nineteen, we, we did that.
Well, there's still a lot of non-conformities at this point.
Right, but I'm just saying is we, there was a gentleman, and I forget his name, Denise.
Francisco Gomez.
He's the one who helped us rewrite it, but there was another, somebody who wrote books on. Walkable and.
Yeah.
And whatever, whatever.
Mark, Mark somebody.
I don't, I don't remember his name, so.
Who you're talking about.
And he came, he did the whole walkable thing of the Enfield. He made a lot of recommendations, Francisco. Help us implement some of those recommendations into Thompsonville, and it was just adopted in twenty nineteen. And then Don says, well, I see a lot of issues with this. I, I, I just hate this, the town spent a lot of money to have these people come in and help us with that. And to have to rewrite it all over again, just seems like more money being spent. That, and, and trust me, Thompsonville, we have spent a lot of money.
Ton.
On, ton of money on Thompsonville and trying to revitalize it between revive.
Two, two studies.
Yeah.
For like eighty thousand.
Yeah, it just seems like we've come a long way in Thompsonville.
Yeah.
With those zoning ordinances, to rewrite them all over again, just seems like being redundant and wasteful in town.
I'm not sure he means to rewrite things, I think he means to perhaps tweak things.
That.
For instance, the Thompsonville plan came into being without any consideration for affordable housing at all.
That was, it was considered in it.
It wasn't?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
It was.
But it wasn't.
Nobody wanted it, nobody wanted it. That's.
But again, those, those things have changed now.
Right.
Whether we, we have no choice.
Mandating from the state level is different than, you know.
Yes.
But again, those things were discussed, they were, you know, talked about, and the public didn't want them, so.
Uh, you remember, I came in like two months before it was supposed to be approved, so I didn't have all of that background. Uh, you remember, I came in like, two months before it was supposed to be approved, so I didn't have all of that background. It was like, uh, this needs to be approved like yesterday, and we had to get an extension.
I mean, you kinda came in like, in that situation, and, and I'm not saying, you know.
So I, I don't remember that conversation.
But, you know.
Yeah.
It was.
Okay, the only thing I'll add, and I'm, I'm looking at Ken, cause I know he's been in the same shoes that I've been in, I'll, I'll say this, and I might say it in public, cause I know we're on TV. Sometimes when you're in government, you have to implement strategies and programs that people with more authority than you.
Right.
By statute pass, whether the public likes it or not at that point, unfortunately, that's just how government works. And sometimes we have to sit in these chairs and make those decisions, and they're painful, and we look across.
I agree with that, I, I, I agree.
We don't have a choice sometimes, and we just have to do it, and that comes, comes with the territory.
But, to, to tweak the Thompsonville regs is one thing, but to actually go and try to recreate the wheel again.
Yeah.
No, three years later.
So can we reword that a little bit, and can, you know where I am here, I go, see where it says, um, right at the top, economic development, strategies for improvement. There it says removing the imped- impediments of non-conforming uses of bulk of crimes, can you just, can you just take, read this, soften it? Review and possibly remove some of the impediments.
Cause we did remove a lot of the impediments, right?
And so they're removing more, I'll say it.
Okay, it's just me one big concrete block.
So, yeah, so I mean, so, by him saying that, that to me says, you know what, maybe we need to look at all of the zoning out there that we did do, and how, how many. Parcels are still non-conforming to set back, or, or, all of them, so, so every time you, you come in, every time somebody comes into this commission. With a non-conforming use.
Well, that's what we did this month.
That's, that's a really difficult thing for you to do, because it's like, huh, how do we deal with this one?
Exactly, that's conforming.
So, I mean, just about every subdivision we have is non-conforming.
One down there, Thompsonville, yeah.
And that was something that I've spoken to Lou about, that I'd like to, to put in, but I, I'm not gonna talk about it now, because we're not there, but. You know, we need to downsize these subdivisions back, um, back to what they were when they originated.
Before nineteen sixty-six.
Yeah.
So, so they, they all are, they become conformant, yeah.
So you said, make Thompsonville five thousand square foot lots?
I think they are now.
It's a deal, you're saying go back to the.
We, no, like my neighborhood, your neighborhood, uh, you probably have a non-conforming.
Well, I'm, I'm not.
Isn't it new neighborhood?
No, I'm not down here anymore.
Oh.
Yeah, but Thompsonville, they're fifty by hundred lots.
Right.
They're not R thirty-three, they're not R forty-four, they're all fifty by hundred.
Then that's why.
Fifty by two hundred.
So, so that's when I, when I hear things like this, I just, it just brings to mind just tweaking the regulations and see, seeing what. What are the things that we have to keep reviewing over and over again, that we could just fix by fixing some words in the zoning regulations?
Yeah.
So that, that's what, what I say, I don't, you know.
Yeah, what, what they did for it, remember, in the eighties, they eliminated R seventeen, right, 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 they took. Uh, and whatever was R seventeen, they made it R thirty-three.
Yeah, right.
R thirty-three, they made it forty-four, forty-four.
You know how hard it is to put that in?
Which is ridiculous, that was, that's when they put the warrantary of the multifamily, right, they just wiped out.
There's a whole history here, a lot, a lot of the regulations that changed, that, that, that ended in that, in that regulation.
I, do you, do you recall how many times you hear somebody come in, it's like, I wanna put a garage in, but it's non-conforming, because it was developed as an R seventeen, and it's R thirty-three now? And it's a special permit!
We have, we have.
Houses are R seventeen.
We can eliminate so much work for, just, just by like downzoning, or whatever the proper process is.
And, and I think, Laurie, to jump in just a little bit quickly, we see this in a larger context of what, like, we have limited, we have resources, we have budgets. We have administrations, change, and their, their approaches change, so. I think we tend to look at this in a more holistic kind of context, in a sense, and this is what I think Laurie's alluding to, is that. Would I spend a tremendous amount of time, and, and you pay me for it, and you pay me really good money, and I have really good benefits, and I think it's criminal. Frankly, that I spend the amount of time that I spend on nits and tittles about non-conforming uses and non-conforming structures. And advising people and guiding them to this process that's incredibly complicated, time-consuming and expensive, and confusing for them. Because they wanna put a shed in their backyard, and it just seems to be every, it's a horrible waste of resources that we have. So I think what Don is talking about here, and to bring it back to, to the, to the P O C D draft, is. The, the theory of non-conforming uses, the convention was in zoning for so many years, was, and it still is, I suppose, in some places. That you, you created a situation where you were eventually going to evolve. To a point where the non-conformities were gonna be reduced and eliminated, that's what the theory was of non-conformity within zoning. That's what the practice were, that you were gonna get rid of these things, cause they were bad things, and we didn't want them. So that's how it was all kinda set up. If you look at a place like Thompsonville, Thompsonville is a village with a fabric and a scale that exists. That's not going to change.
Yep.
So by maintaining this kinda convention about non-conformity in a place like Thompsonville, and you could pick Hazardville, you could pick, you could pick any village. Mystic in Groton, where I used to work, same thing, it doesn't matter, it, it, it's not specific to a particular geography. What you're doing is you're just kinda creating artificial, like angst and costs and confusion for people, I get people all the time, I have one today. They want a zoning letter, cause they have a closing, somebody's buying three family, and, and lawyers do this all the time, they want a lawyer for the bank, cause the bank won't give you the money unless you get the zoning letter. And they wanna know whether or not it's a conforming three family. Rick and I now have to go and spend lots of time in researching and try to figure out for this particular address, like, did they actually, when was it done, was it done before zoning? Did they get the permits, we can talk to the building official, did they change this, they add an illegal three, third unit, what did they do, I don't know, talk to the fire marshal. You know, we, we pull them in, we're like, hey, what do you guys got on this, do you have anything, whatever, we spend a ridiculous amount of time doing that. So part of this has to do with allowing us to be more efficient, so we can focus our efforts and our money and our budget and our personnel. On the things that are really strategically critical to get done for the community, whether that's the mall. Or whether it's the old Cigna, you know, situation, or whatever it happens to be, whatever your, you know, big, big picture priority things are, cause. If we're gonna keep spending an enormous amount of time on, on this kinda stuff, we'll do it, I get paid.
Yeah.
I'm a happy guy, so, but I wanna be able to do what we should be doing, you know, for you and for the community going forward, so anyway, that's my little stump speech.
Very well said, I mean, and that's, it's, it's the truth, I mean.
And it's not unique to Enfield, don't feel like I'm picking on you, because.
Yeah.
I've worked in a lot of places over the years, it's, it's the same everywhere, for the most part.
Unless we take that and put it in, and implement it into the regulations, you know, have it in here, one thing, but. We're gonna have to take that next step.
I, I was here when John's.
We need to take that next step.
John's alluding to the, to the global result that we did back in, I was here, this was my first.
Oh, you were in John.
And we did that when Greg Jarrett was here, and that's when it was done, and I remember thinking at the time, I was brand new, I was like twenty-four years old, I'd only been a planner for. Six months or something like that, and I was thinking, even intuitively, you're thinking, something doesn't seem right about this, why do we do that? So.
And now it's not right.
You go out to Buck, you go out to uh Buckhorn?
Yeah.
Okay. It's not going anywhere, it's there, it's not changed, so the notion that that has to be like R forty-four, or eighty-eight, or whatever the heck it is. Is, is completely obscene to me, frankly, so, part of this should be, if we're talking about economic development, affordable housing, making things like just more rational for people. You, you know, if they wanna go get a refinancing, that it's not like some act of commerce to, to get it, those are the kinds of things we're gonna do that are.
And this creates the streamlining.
Yeah, and, and then we can do other, we can.
So then we can actually plan things as opposed to react.
Mm-hmm, so, I don't know.
Appreciate the question.
Yeah, on, on that point, I mean, and this would have been a, a good question for Don, which I thought about it, but he called, he specifically called out Thompsonville. And I mean, especially amidst all the discussion, like, I don't see why that would be limited to Thompsonville, if we really do have so many non-conforming lots, if, if non-conformity is the standard.
That is right, and that's one of the strategies that I'm, I'm suggesting, is that we downzone existing non-conforming subdivisions.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think we make it unique to Thompsonville, I think that's.
No, I agree.
Not just that.
Which, which.
Really take, you really come in, like, I, I meet with them like once a week, and one of my biggest jokes is we'd sit in Laurie's office. And we'd take a look at that wonderful, what do they call those kind of knitting things you put the quilt together, that zoning map of Enfield. And you look at, I hate to call them spot zones, but I'll, just for the lack of a term, all the different spot zones, all the Z B A little things that were done, and it's like a multicolored checkerboard. All over the town, all these things that were done piecemeal over the last fifty years, well-intentioned. We, we have a bu- a building, a, a, a business zone that probably was created for one building.
Yes.
You know, so it's, it's like, what are we doing, you know, what are we doing? So really, you get a chance to come in the zoning office, and go in Laurie's office, and just take a look at the big map, it's about as big as this uh television right behind us.
So.
Your, 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 your left.
So maybe instead of putting it in Thompsonville area, cause down the southern part of town, we have lots of houses that are non-conforming. So we just put it in town.
Just take out Thompsonville.
Well, yeah, you, you can't just do a blanket, okay, we're gonna downzone everything.
Cause you're talking about economic development.
We know that there are. Probably fifteen different subdivisions that were upzoned.
Yep.
And, and everything in it is non-conforming.
Yeah.
So if we could bring it down to what it was zoned as when it was created, then there's no more issue.
I agree with that, we should.
But in the statement in economic development, it says, to remove the impediments of non-conforming use and bulk requirements in Thompsonville.
Okay, so what about in Thompsonville?
The whole community, region, all districts.
Yeah, all zones, all zones, don't, don't just say Thompsonville.
Just say.
And all zones, and all zones.
Right.
Right.
Understanding that there may be, and now I'm gonna contradict myself, there may be situations where you may want to actually.
Yeah, exactly.
More towards the elimination of non-conformities. Where there is, I don't know, I, my views and opinions where it might be appropriate, but I'll leave that, you know, to you guys, so leave yourself a little wiggle.
How about like an upzoned um subdivisions? And that doesn't mean that you can't do it elsewhere, it's just that, okay, reminder, this, we wanna do this, that's not, that's not gonna happen overnight.
No.
No.
This is, you know, you're gonna notify every person that lives in each of these subdivisions and figure out exactly what the zoning was when they were created, and. Public hearings, and, you know, so.
But yeah, it, the person that has a thirty-foot setback for their house comes before, they have to come before us to put a garage on, because it's. It must be thirty-five, no, there's, there, we're talking a garage, because it's, the setback is thirty-five feet, and your house, the fur of their house is only thirty feet, and they're like. So I had to come here, and then they had to spend all this money.
Right, and we had to spend all that time writing memos for you, and you had to spend all that time saying, why are we here?
We need to alleviate that.
Right, so, so, I, I think we have a consensus here that we.
The example you gave about somebody wanted to put up a shed on their own property, has to go through all those hoops, we gotta get rid of that.
I, it's, the, the, the application fee is probably, you know, and building permits is probably more than the shed.
More than the shed, yeah. Whatever we can do to alleviate, you know, all that on the residence.
I mean, and that, and that's, but that's wrong, that's not, but that is not.
That is wrong.
Doing things.
All right, let's move on from that, I think we're all in consensus there.
Yes.
Uh, before we leave page eleven and twelve, is there consensus to uh change some of the wording here about reducing the over-reliance on special permit uses? And, and, and both pages, it just, um. Is everyone okay with the inclusionary zoning provision? I just wanna bring that up today, so it doesn't have to come up again, is everyone okay with that? That's on the bottom, page eleven. Just wanna bring that up.
An inclusionary zoning provision.
Yeah, I'm just.
That requires all resi- all four. That requires residential development units or more to provide a percent of the total units to be qualified affordable units.
I, I.
Hold on, so I make sure we have a chance to read it first, before we start, please, is everyone, everyone has that in front of them? The reason why I bring this up is again, don't forget, we have to bring this and sell it to the council, so let's, let's make sure we're all together, go ahead.
I, cause we're talking in, that says qualified affordable units. Part of these understands what affordable units means is reasonable, but. We also, if you have ten or more units by law, you have to allow vouchers. So, that, this is the part that I'm having a real difficult time with, because there's by law requirement that you have to accept. A certain percentage of vouched um housing. It, it's not, you know, I, I don't want anybody who has section eight, I don't want that, I don't want anybody who has a voucher living, you can't say that, so. This kind of, I, I.
I, I think I'm not.
Using.
Well versed in the voucher.
Yeah.
Program, so I can't comment.
And this is residential development units, that, that, that's single family too, you know, it's not just multifamily.
Right. I'm, that's where I'm looking at this, I'm not looking at this to talk about multifamily, that's the way it looks.
Well, no, it's not, it says residential development of ten units or more, that could be single family homes, for a small subdivision.
Okay, so, that's, that's not clear.
That is not clear, I think.
It's not clear.
Selected.
Take out what?
All, it says require is all, how do we say, require is selected residential development?
Well, is that anything the state is mandating? Yeah, is that a state mandate that all?
My government.
When I see the word unit, it's multifamily.
Neutral.
Unit is multifamily.
And is that a requirement of the state?
Well, you could say multifamily, no reason why you couldn't.
Say multifamily.
Be specific and say ten year in multi, in multifamily and be.
However, you wouldn't even notice it in a, a single family development.
I'm not saying, but again, it just is kind of confusing, confusing. Uh, it's just a, it could be a little clearer what he means, like.
Clarify.
Clarify, ten units, housing slash units. So that, if somebody's reading it, it's a little like, huh, they're not, they're not just apartments, they're talking housing, to houses.
Yeah, I think that needs, that needs to be, I, I agree, cause that's, like, I could tell, that's one that's gonna get picked right out.
Yeah.
All right, moving, moving forward, I think we are on page twelve, we talked about.
Before we read that.
Hold on, sorry, I'm sorry, Kenny.
Before we read that, I guess. In my mind, affordable development units are gonna be probably selected areas in town. Not all residential development.
You know what, it depends.
That's just my, that's just my opinion, that's my opinion, okay?
Developer, the developer's gonna decide.
Well, yeah, I know, but it also depends on how much land is available, and how many is needed, you know, for, whether it's a large one, or a small one, or, you know, whatever. And, and I just think by saying all means now the builders have to scramble their own, say, well. The heck do I do that now in this space, you know, does it make sense for this space? That, that kinda thing, that's, that's what I'm worried about.
You're right.
As written, it's a mandate, yes, yes, very specific to that.
I think it should have some flexibility.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, so, it, it would probably make it more attractive to, to development if we, if we worded that way.
So the other thing that, you know, can be inclusionary is, is um giving a bonus, if you, if you have. If you offer one accessory, or one affordable housing unit in your development, we could give you a density bonus for the others. So that, that's another possible tool that you could use, so. So I mean, we could talk about this, and we can, you know, you could consider it, again. You don't ever have to act on it, unless you say that it's part of your housing plan.
This, this should just be.
It, but it should be, I think it should.
This should be for units, this paragraph, I would look at it as units, apartment units, not a subdivision.
No, I, I disagree.
No, twelve acres.
No, I shouldn't, no, right, no, but I'm saying it shouldn't be like that.
It should be specific.
Right, it shouldn't be, because if somebody's gonna put in a tract of homes that will just say, very expensive, every ten houses, they're gonna throw a small little.
No, they'll be the same thing, you know, what they do is they basically put in the same house, but that one house might have granite countertops, and the other one might have laminate, or, or something that helps.
One car garage instead of two car garage.
I know it's not laminate, whatever, whatever it is.
Of course.
Of course, yeah, there you go, so, um, you know, just, you know, it's things like that that bring the little costs down.
Yeah, I, I think that Don hit, the, last time Don really hit the nail on the head when another person who was sitting down where John was. Was talking about affordable housing, and even more of a negative impact, in my opinion, about management companies, and Don really hit him, he said, listen. You've got to get that Thompsonville mindset out of your mind, we're talking about affordable housing, that's not. That's not what we're talking about anymore. It's really different. So you can't be thinking in that aspect. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with some things you're saying, Frank, but it's different. Affordable housing is to the eye of a beholder, per se.
And that's where the affordable housing.
It's a big range, dollar-wise.
For those acronyms. Yep.
No, not. Right, thank you, John, I wouldn't wanna use that.
What can you define?
Yes, thank you.
But if you had that page in front of you with the acronyms and, and stuff, that would be really.
Think of it as workforce housing. Workforce housing.
Yeah, workforce.
I like that term.
And realistically, that's what it is, because eighty percent of the median income here is seventy to eighty-five thousand.
Sixty, sixty, yeah.
So some of the homes would be a lot better, were built without all the bells and whistles, without all the amenities, without the granite, without the fireplace, without. Touch.
That's what our housing plan requires.
But it's still in my house, and they'd be part of the community, and, you know, everybody would be part of the community, it would be diverse and inclusionary.
Aesthetic-wise on the outside, you would know the difference.
Absolutely.
Until I go in your house and I see you have laminated countertop instead of lower grade wood floors.
Yeah, but I do agree, that doesn't need to be, that doesn't need to be clarified.
Chris? I know, I think, I think it's a great point that we, we keep in there. I think it's, you know, it's, it's a very normal thing nowadays. I mean, the percentage can be ten percent. You're only gonna define the percentage here, it could be as low as ten percent, one unit per. But it's a, it's a, it's a good way to build the mixed-income neighborhoods, mixed-income apartments. It's a really good, you know, compared to the times.
That's right.
With the low income. That's the thing, yeah, we, we gotta get away from the old.
Yeah, old acronyms, yeah, mindset where we are.
Yeah, where it's a tower of all, all low income. And it's, it's been proven to be a very bad way to build community.
Remember, low income isn't a bad thing, I mean, we all went to school at one time, I'm guessing we all lived in an apartment at one time. I mean, I know I did for longer than I cared to, but how else was I going to get through?
Right.
So.
So we're gonna, we'll come back to that paragraph, let our staff take a shot at that, tighten that up a little bit, more clarified for us. Anything on page eleven? Page twelve, I had one thing, I guess I just had. Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, on page eleven, on the top part, I did just make two quick notes about the community facilities capital improvement. I know there's, and this is mentioned a couple of times throughout, specifically calling it geothermal heating and cooling. I think, I think we're doing ourselves a disservice if we're omitting air source heat pumps. So geothermal is one specific type of heat pumps. Ultra-efficient, but incredibly expensive. Um, again, so, so that, that goes throughout the entire plan. Um, and then as far as like the energy efficiency part, um, this is, I just made a note, again, this is mentioned a couple of times throughout in terms of kind of encouraging the, the switch to electric is a real boost. It's, it's one of the key, uh, key strategies towards sustainability. Switching appliances and, uh, especially appliances, um, from gas or oil, et cetera, to, to electric.
I, I, I think that, that kind of detail, Chris, to be honest with you, I kind of think we should stay away from that.
Yeah.
That's not really a planning thing, I think, no offense, but I think we make the, we make, right, we make the, we make the the push in that direction.
Yeah.
That's not really a planning issue, but.
Yeah, I, 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 I mean, I, I saw the notes about, I, I wouldn't have bought like insulation, air sealing retrofitted.
I wouldn't, I didn't either when I saw it.
Would be, but that, but that, so that's the thing, like, if that's in there, then I think switch to electric appliances is, is on equal scale, if not more important than those. But I mean, no, but equal scale.
Oh, which is interesting, electric appliances now might be energy efficient, but it used to be gas.
Yes.
That used to be the, the way to go.
Yeah, it might be, yeah, it might switch again.
Ten, ten fifteen years ago, they would have been pushing, you know, switch to gas appliances.
Yeah.
Well, I know, the larger, the larger point, I think is a valid point, which is to say this is a P O C D document, it's a policy document. It's kind of a broadly focused policy document to provide guidance. So that level of specificity about construction and utilities specifics, I'm wondering if that's even appropriate to even have in there, because we, you don't, the planning zoning commission doesn't have any authority of jurisdiction over those kinds of codes or mandating.
We have to.
You're right, it's all code, away from us. Somebody else looks at that.
Maybe just a thought of, of backing off.
Make it, make it, make it more general.
Yeah.
Energy efficiency, you're talking about that once, yes, please, I agree. Yeah, I, I thought to say.
Otherwise, it'd probably be an expectation on the part of at least some people that, you know, you're gonna write some reg that's gonna mandate whatever and.
Yeah.
I just want this beautiful Castro, who lost me two thousand dollars.
Are we done with page eleven? Are we done with page eleven?
I have one, one possible promotion to create small parcel, like five to seven thousand square foot open space subdivisions. So you could have, um, open, you know, subdivisions with smaller lots, which a lot of people are looking for, and then protecting the, the environment. So for instance, like protecting T E slopes, terrace of scartman slopes. Um, you know, there was the one subdivision way down south, uh, I can't even remember, the one that, that abuts East Windsor. Anyway.
Iron Road one?
Yes, I think so. So, I mean, you know, if we had small lot subdivision regulations, they could create a nice little pocket of house, small houses and protect that whole area as open space. So just a consideration. And I think that that would, and that.
Is that like the mini houses?
Yeah, well, yeah.
We could, we have something on that, or we had a presentation on that one time? Mini house, that's what they're called, right, mini houses?
Yeah, mini houses, but I mean, it doesn't even, I mean.
With like whole subdivisions?
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah, so.
Somebody gave us a presentation.
Quite honestly, it's kind of, kind of like, um, John's app, uh, what's, um, subdivision of multifamily development with single-family.
Yeah, more clustered, yeah.
Still contained and it's more clustered, but yours are still a little bit on the larger side.
Yeah, they are, square footage wise and.
And some people would like smaller housing and smaller lots. They'd still wanna have that, that little garden, that little pocket garden, that little bit of green around them, but, you know, so just adding to housing diversity. I'm done.
Okay. This is Alex coming from us.
Oh. Oh, that's true.
Yes.
Never mind.
All right, so, okay, can we go on to page twelve? Yep, page twelve, we talked about the top one there about the, you know, the impediments of non-conform use.
Yep.
We talked also about possibly in that create a well-defined economic development program mentioning the economic development officer in that section. Um, only thing I had here was where it says create a comprehensive community facilities plan. I think we need to take out, engage a consulting firm.
I think you, I did that.
Yeah, because I, I, I don't, I'm, I, I, I'm not gonna present that to the council saying you need to hire a consultant firm. It's up to them to decide how we're gonna do that, not, not the planning zoning commission. So I don't, I don't have problem engaging.
Which one was this?
Create a comprehensive community facilities plan.
Chapter seven.
Right, chapter seven, page twelve.
On page thirteen, right?
No, we're on page twelve.
Oh, sorry about that.
Need to take out.
Okay.
And I, I think, yes, create, for sure, create a comprehensive community facilities plan. We need to take out, engage a consultant firm to do that.
Laurie, didn't the town a few years ago, and I think they still have a facilities, a community facilities commission of some sort?
They, they did a, they did a comprehensive plan, but apparently Don believes that it wasn't as comprehensive as it should have been.
Well, if, if, if you, if you look at.
He elaborates furthermore about it.
If you go to chapter seven and read the first paragraph.
Yeah.
I mean, he's got that, he hit that, you know, right on the head. I mean, you know, everywhere you drive around Enfield, it's, it's empty bubble of buildings. Rico Fermi, Nathan Hale, um, Bowery.
Her reason is empty, if you think, John, to be quite frank with you.
Well, I, I've never seen more than about twenty-five cars parked there, and the school's about three hundred thousand square feet, so it's gotta be pretty empty. But Nathan Hale, um, uh, is outcoren even fully, fully utilized. Um, you know, we got more empty town buildings that are costing money rather than putting them out on tax, rather than defeating the whole purpose of, uh, uh, the high school consolidation. You think that, get rid of the school, put out a tax laws, but, you know, let's, let's, let's keep an empty building, you're more in the moment to maintain.
Well, really, when you, when you get down to it, John, I, I can only think of two municipal buildings that are empty right now. Nathan Hale for sure is empty. I don't know, I don't know what plan's going on there, that's empty, I'm here on this. And, um, yeah, probably about a third of the old Rico Fermi is empty. They are using, we could, we could discuss whether, with anybody, whether it's being used appropriately. But the space, the spaces are being used. Other than that, the, the old, the old senior center on High Street is gone now. Um, they're still using the old, uh, the old, the DPW building down on, uh, Pleasant Prospect Street down there, they're still, they're still using it. They don't wanna give it up either, they don't, they don't wanna leave. Um, I can't think of any other municipal building that's empty. Other than that, now, the old Noah Webster School, I'm bringing, that's a private, that's a private, he's owned, the guy, the control module owns that building. So really, when you get down to it, those would be only, unless I'm forgetting something, those would be the only two municipal buildings that aren't being.
But it's property that's being not used or underutilized, that's costing a lot of money, a lot of resources. I mean, that's, that's.
I think Don, Don made it there. The Rico, I think what bothered him is the old Fermi High School. There's no new comprehensive plan for Rico Fermi High School.
Yeah, you know, they, they, they took it off the school and they brought it to the town and they call it an annex, so that's, you know.
Yep. Outcoren school, by the way, all, 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 all four fours.
So, so Louis, is, is your problem doing the study, Louis, you don't really want?
No, I just only, I don't think we need to be, we shouldn't be telling the town council they need to hire a consulting firm.
And doesn't our town council and our staff look at this, uh, uh, look at the overall picture, our town manager, and say, hey, we've got to do blah, blah, blah? I mean, we don't set the budget. Town council does.
I think right now, if I can, I think right now, because if I get back to my point, because the only municipal building I know, unless I'm forgetting something, is Nathan Hale, and maybe, and we can all have, that Rico Fermi is not maybe being utilized to its fullest. That's really not bad to where it used to be, when we had a lot more buildings that weren't used for a long time, so. Um, that's probably, I don't wanna speak for them, it's probably not one of their top things on their agenda to do right now, even though it should be done. But certainly the, the community facilities plan needs to be updated, needs to be reviewed and looked at again, um, for, without a doubt. That's just my perception.
Remember, this is a ten-year plan, so maybe we're not gonna do it this year, maybe we'll do it in the ninth year.
Yeah, yeah, great, yeah.
It's a shame to have.
Has to, has to, yeah.
I gotta fix that.
That's the, yes. Anything else on page twelve?
Yeah, so, um, the second line's bullet point, encourage alternative modes of transportation. Does mention adopting a complete streets policy, so, and Melissa did, kept, catches on there.
We already have one.
We have one, yeah, so it's not about adopting, it would be reviewing according to the policy. It's supposed to be reviewed every five years, I think it's still on, uh, twenty fifteen.
Yeah, some comments that I put in the document that I gave him is already doing, already doing in one day.
And we already have ten, which you.
Could be, uh, could be reviewed, yeah. And, and as far as, um, I mean, it does, the, the bullet point is encourage alternative modes of transportation, omit transit, right, bus, train, that is, that is a glaring omission there, so. If we're talking about alternative means of transportation, we can't, we can't omit those two key, uh, key aspects. Especially train station.
Hey, anything else, and is everybody okay with that so far, moving on? Everybody okay with page twelve?
Yeah.
Page thirteen? The only thing I wanna mention about page thirteen that I wanna bring to your attention. Um, the build upon a two thousand fourteen Enfield energy strategy and two thousand seventeen nineteen energy savings performance contract. Um, I have yet, and I have requested to get a list of the twenty twenty li- list of likely town buildings or for rooftop installations. I don't believe that list really exists. I've asked the town manager for the list, I've gotten no reply, and I've talked to two people that are currently on that town council-appointed subcommittee. They've never heard of such a list. So I basically, at this point, I think that whole sentence should be removed. I don't believe there really is a list. And the town manager can't give you one, I don't think there's a list.
I was questioning that myself, I'd never heard.
I had no idea where it came from, I actually asked two members and they didn't, ooh, there's a list, I wish I had it. So that, that should just come out. If there is one, then.
Maybe he got one.
I don't know, maybe it's probably not an official list. It probably was a working list that never got adopted.
Yeah, I don't know.
Anything else on page thirteen, anyone? Okay. Moving on to page fourteen, I, I think we, you know, I had one highlighted, we talked about it to death. Amendment is only district of council to remove restrictive provisions that are creating non-conform use, talked about today. Anything else on fourteen?
I don't understand the, the selling regulation, non-conforming bulk and area requirements. What are you, what are you considering bulk? What does that mean?
Bulk is some kind of a broad term that's used to capture things like setbacks, lock coverage, coverage, drilling heights, you know, those kind of like spatial standards.
All right, so it's, it's the whole discussion, we just.
It's.
Exactly, right, yeah, exactly.
All right, I just.
But just related to TiVo, Thompsonville, sorry.
Yeah. There is the new loan program, establish a new loan program, uh, mid for housing, we already have one. And it's always, some of the comments that I gave him already, was, as I write in my margins. Why are you doing this? Maybe we don't have the big, uh, budget to do it, but we do have a program to help people buy houses, so.
First time.
Yeah, first time.
This does specifically call out improvements, uh.
Improvements, exterior improvements and stuff, yeah.
We do have a little bit of that at the.
Yeah, we have some money for that too.
Because one of the things that was identified, if you remember the, um, Thompsonville survey that was done here at Town Hall, one of the things that clearly came out in that study was the fact that the quality of some of the housing in Thompsonville needs to be improved somehow. And I think, I think this might have been done for someone's attempt to try to answer that survey question, is that they need to provide more money so that the housing stock can be improved. You know, some of it isn't gonna get torn down once it burns down. It's gonna be there, so how do we get some money in people's hands who own those, some of those properties, who might be willing to improve the quality of that housing stock? Because that's really a big issue.
We do have a program, I don't know if it's still.
Yeah, there's some C D, C D B G money, it obviously has been, probably not enough.
Well.
Yeah, probably not enough. I think that's just the intent here.
But I think people don't even know that it's built.
I know, I, I know, in my day, that the owners, not all the owners, because you don't know all the owners, but a large amount of the owners that were identified were always told about the C D B G funds that were available for the housing improvements. Some of you are well aware are not inclined to improving their properties, some are, some took evangelism, loan programs, so.
I agree.
There's not a lot of owner occupied.
No.
There was a program for owner occupied, yeah.
No.
Housing that they were, they, they could, uh, call it like for loans and so forth, um, or incentives, grants and so forth. But there's not a lot of that, I guess, uh, you know. You know, the, the only way that, if, if the town had money, whether it's grant money or partner with a bank, and then they, you know, guarantee the loans or something to, to do improvements and so forth. You get a lot of takers, because you got a lot of, a lot of out-of-town investors that are buying two families and, and they only work, they don't care, they don't wanna put money into it, they just wanna reap. They, you know, get, get, get the rentals out of it and so forth, they, they just, they don't want the money, that's, that's the problem.
Yep, yeah, absolutely.
You can't enforce that, it is what it is.
The only, the only enforcement we have is when they tip that barrel towards the blade end. Or, or, or a housing code violation.
Right, and some of these old houses, uh, they are code violations, they got, uh, you know, staircases are maybe too steep or narrow, whatever they are, but, but what, what prompts that for, for repairs? Nothing really, unless, unless they're doing improvements, then it prompts a whole inspection, so.
Legal apartments up in, up in the attic that are certified or no fire escape.
Legal bedrooms in the attic.
Right, so the legal bedrooms, yes.
Yeah.
All right, so move on to the next page, I think. Anybody have anything on page sixteen? Seventeen. Just gonna keep kinda going till I see a hand or somebody stop. Eighteen. Nineteen. I am gonna stop at twenty. I'll wait for everybody to catch up with twenty. I'll wait for everybody to catch up with twenty. Is everybody there? I think, personally, I just have a problem with a couple of things that are stated here, which I believe need to be tempered down. So I, I am very uncomfortable sitting there presenting this to the town council with these two sentences in here, very uncomfortable. For me to say that, those who know me, know that I'm very uncomfortable. Um, we get down towards the end of that first paragraph on page twenty. And I'll read it to you, residential multifamily apartments show promise with the greatest demand, I, I totally agree. Goes on further, say, however, Enfield has consist- consistently shown tepid community support for multifamily residential development.
I agree.
Especially rental apartments, that, that has to be taken out.
Yes.
That has to be taken out.
Yes.
I, I, no way am I going in front of the council that, that sentence like that. I, I like that here, residential multifamily apartments show promise with the greatest demand, I think that's fine, period. And, and even especially, you, you can even leave, especially rental apartments, fine, but that other part, it's gotta come out. We get down farther, another editorial comment has to come out, especially since, get to the housing part, because on page twenty-one, it, it, it expands that, so, I'll read it to you. Enfield's housing stock lacks diversity, I think we kind of all come to that conclusion ourselves now. Specifically multifamily housing, and that, that's an editorial comment, that needs to be removed, because it's self-explanatory when you keep reading the rest of the document. He goes on to say the rest of the document, I, I, I'm sorry, should say, he was on other, people on the committees inputted that too. So I want to see specifically multifamily housing, just that part taken out of the document. This should read, Enfield's housing stock lacks diversity, and has not adapted to recent housing trends that favor multifamily housing. I think that's fine, doesn't need to have that bullet in here. And then when you get to page twenty-one, pretty much the same thing. When you get to the top of the paragraph on page twenty-one, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, in addition, Enfield's housing stock is older aging, that's, he's absolutely correct, or the commission, the committee was absolutely correct. More important and possibly most concerning, Enfield's tepid interest. Well, again, I am not going in front of the town council with that statement in here. I don't mind it saying more important, uh, in allowing more multifamily housing, but you gotta take out the possibly most concerning Enfield's tepid interest. That's gotta come out. Does anyone have any disagreement with that? Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Any other questions on, up to that point, twenty-one? I think his graph, his graph, we did data, Kenny was saying, perfect, that's wonderful explanation. And even when you read the body of that, it's tilted towards, you know, in its own nicer way, saying our tepid interest, don't get me wrong, but it doesn't hit you in the face.
Well, but didn't we say you're okay to have tepid interest?
Well, Melissa, that I'm gonna say, did you say?
Oh, I didn't. Came out of tone.
It did. I think another thing I want to bring up on the next page, on twenty-two, and I, certainly, I do want comments here, hopefully everyone has a comment, even staff. Uh, the role and challenge of planning, there's, uh, people have, who've read this document, have come up to me and asked me about this. Um, Enfield's demographic and socioeconomic trends point to challenges in crafting a P O C D that can create change. So do we want to craft a P O C D that's going to create change, or are we happy with the slow and deliberate way Enfield's going, or do we want to create one? And who really wants change?
Define change.
Define change, yeah, I'm just, I'm throwing that out, I'm not, I don't know.
No, I'm throwing that out.
Define change.
Do you want drastic change, or do we like the consistent?
Right, is it our job to encourage change?
Could be gradual change, too.
Well, and what, what, what are we promoting to change? I mean, do we want, Matt and I were talking about this earlier, do we want the mall to change?
Yeah, we want the mall.
That's change, so yes, we want to promote that. Do we want to promote diversity in housing? That's the question. Do you want to promote economic development? That's, that could be change. So, I think when they say, when P O C Ds say something of this nature, I mean, that's kind of, I mean, the, the point is, is you're going to change regulations, policies, in order to make those changes that you want. So that's where these tasks come in. Now, the way that it says, trends point to challenges in crafting a P O, P O C D that can create change, and influence Enfield's trajectory, and foster meaningful community improvement. I, you know, I, I don't necessarily see anything really wrong with that, but I can understand how people could say, well, I don't want any change, I want everything to stay the same. But do they really want everything to stay, to stay the same, I mean, it's how, how specific do you want that to be?
Yeah, that was why I brought it up. That's, that's why I brought it up, I'm, I'm interested, everyone, my fellow groups' thoughts.
Change happens whether we want it or not, and, I mean, let's take the mall. Ten years ago, it wasn't a great mall, but it was still viable mall, it was still things going on in there, and over time, stores left for lots of reasons, and it wasn't just Enfield's caused that reason, it was outside forces caused stores to leave. Um, their financial, so, I mean, that changed. Um, change is always gonna happen, whether we want it or not, it just depends on if it's a big change, and who knows, maybe somebody's gonna come in and say, hey, I got this great idea for the mall, and we're gonna go, yeah, do it. And everything will be different, so, change is there, it's gonna happen.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead. Oh, I was gonna, I was gonna just say, I, I, you know, it's, we're clearly crafting that, you know, as it says, we're clearly crafting it to kind of guide the town in a certain direction. So we do want things to change, so, but just within the guise of, of the plan, so I, I, I don't have any issues with the word.
We, we get applications all the time, and they, and they submit it, and they say, well, this is also, we're submitting this in accordance with your P O C D, and that, and that, but, you know, and, and, and that's great, uh, because this, this is, it's, it's not, it's not gospel, it is a guideline. Uh, our, our Bible is really the zoning regulation, so we have to, you know, look at it through the eyes of that first, um, but, but, you know, again, people, developers aren't coming in, and applicants are coming in, and they're using this as, as a guideline, you know, that, that, it fits the mold of what, where, you know, the town wants to go, so they submit it in accordance with that, so they make it known.
I, I think it's great, I mean, change, change, you know, I'm thinking of the Auburn Mall, I drive by the Auburn Mall, and where Macy's used to be on the end, it's now a medical building, you know, and really, you know, they put a new facade, it's similar, there's new facade, and nice signage, and, you know, and, so, I mean, we could do something like that, it's a change, that's not a big change, but it's gonna fill the mall, it's gonna attract people to the mall area, attract other little businesses, because if you're gonna go to the medical building for something, then you can do other things, and stop at the coffee shop, whatever you, you know.
But we really can't do that, though, Ken, I was gonna be a major, maybe, this company might, or maybe some other company might.
Might be approved.
Right, yeah, we can, we can bring up.
Also, this is making a point that, you know, it, it's not only just, I mean, I mean, Donna in here, he mentions, you know, apartments above the mall, and all that kind of stuff. And, but it's not just that, it could be better.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, I don't know.
Eliminating the non-conforming status of a lot of.
That's a change, yeah, that's a big change. Such a change. Frank, have you been, or?
No, I, I think, you know, change is good, and change is always hard.
Okay.
And, you know, maybe we, that we look at the riverfront, you know, wanna see access, I mean, you can walk, we can do something here. Natural resource, you know, it's beautiful.
Let it build on the riverfront.
You know, maybe that need no change, you know, we're talking about the mall, connecting to Thompsonville, and the rail stop, and, you know, change is good, but change sometimes hard.
Yeah.
People.
Well, thank you, thank you, because that was a setup question for you guys, because I wanted to hear everybody's opinion, and I think it was good to have it on the record, so that we all know, because some residents and some politicians possibly are going to be asking us about change, and so, it's good that we all heard each other out on this one, I did that on purpose, so, everybody heard us, who's gonna watch YouTube, so, thank you very much, everybody. And I, and I, and I, and I agree, as I said, it's a kind of a setup question, my apologies, thought that would need to be done. Page twenty-four, anything? Actually, I really thought, uh, I, I really, I thought Don and, and the group did a wonderful job on chapter three, I missed Enfield's cultural landscape and vision, matter of fact, I had one thing I like on page twenty-six, I thought it was important that I noticed it has some things bolded.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think this whole thing needs to be bolded, where, on page, middle of page twenty-six, where it says approximately eight hundred forty-three acres of land in Enfield are protected by the state frontline preservation program, I think that, and then see how this, this equates to twenty-one percent, I think that whole thing should be bold, I think it should be, when people pick this up, be it councilmen or residents, they pick that up and they see that bolded, they're gonna understand what's going on, and I think it's positive things, that's why I want to bring it to their attention. If anyone, anyone have a problem with that? Any, any questions on page twenty-five or twenty-six?
I just, um, wanted to see some of the, the, um, comments in scenic resources and agricultural lands as tasks, as, as implementable.
Which ones?
Strategies. So, for instance, like, like, Enfield should consider the right farm ordinance, which I think is in there elsewhere.
Yeah, yeah, it's a task, yeah.
Yeah, um.
Can, can you be favorable if I, if I don't mind? I, I don't clearly quite understand what that really means, what does that really mean, right, define?
Oh, so you actually have to create an ordinance, and it allows just about anybody to farm, but you need to, it, you can set it for certain areas, or you can have basically a whole town, and really, it's supposed to be global, um.
Oh, really, okay, so it tends to be global?
And basically, it, it just gives more rights to farmers, because, by the way, they have cows, they stink.
Yeah.
Um, some people love that smell, but, you know, but it, it creates, um, automatic barriers and things of that nature, uh, we did it in East Winter, and everybody was very happy with it.
Okay, okay, thank you, thanks for your suggestion.
We have three acre farms.
No, you don't, it's not a right to farm, so it's basically a, a, it's a broad stro- approach, so, like, if you have, if you've got a, a house, you want a farm, go ahead. You got industrial property and you're not using part of it, plant some corn, go ahead.
So, you're saying like in an R thirty-three neighborhood, if somebody just wants to start having cows, go ahead?
Well, there's not, there's going to be some restrictions there, obviously acreage will play.
No, I bought, I bought a three acre farm, I, it's three acres, I love it, it's horses, it's animal, it's nice, but I mean, there has to be some.
Well, there's still, there's still guidelines, regulations, but it's.
You don't want a cow moving, moving over your fence.
It promotes.
You know, it, you know, it might work out.
Yeah, I got horses behind me.
If you like wildlife or not.
I have all kinds of animals behind me, but it's a three acre farm, it's beautiful, but it's three acres.
Yeah.
And it's well maintained, I mean, there has to be all kinds of regulations that go with it.
Yeah, you have another one?
Um, I mean, just, just, um.
Yeah, I think some of those are our B task.
Promoting our tours.
Yeah, yeah.
So I was just, you know, writing notes to myself for that, so.
Anything on page twenty-six? Twenty-seven? Twenty-six?
Uh, yeah, I did, I did make some mention, I, I don't think, I'm not sure that this chapter mentioned words about, uh, trees. Um, the importance of trees in town, um, planting them, conserving them. Our, our neighbor on the street, uh, Long Meadow, is a, is a Arbor Day, um, I think it's called a, a tree, Tree City, I think, it's, it's something, so they're like certified. So basically, they meet certain, uh, uh, requirements in terms of the, the investment they, they put in trees, street trees, encouraging planting of trees, uh.
Um, they also take down a tree and there's tree belt, they replace it.
Yeah, and, and the conservation commission is working on that, probably as we speak.
If you want something that's particularly bad for that, Chris, you don't have to give it to us tonight, if you, if you want something in there, if you can get us, the bullet will break out Thursday.
Sure, sure.
If you think you should have something.
Low impact development is what it's meant.
Yeah, we're getting, we're getting.
No, I'm talking about the trees and stuff like that.
It might be in that, but that part.
It could be, but I'm saying that's.
Forward for drainage.
And our zoning regulations, that, we have pretty strict landscape requirements, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, do we need to revisit?
But I think, I think this was, I think Chris, we're bringing up like, um, enhancing and working on Arbor Day, being a part of, make sure it's part of Enfield's.
Well, that, that could be an example of like, uh, of a, of an action item, could be to strive to be.
Yeah.
Right, right. They got, so, see, see, give us something.
I'll just do it again.
Yeah. Anything on twenty-nine?
I just, I just wanted to clarify that we have a flood ordinance.
Yeah. Yeah. And I like that, again, you have that, that part highlighted there, I like that, about the, uh, approximately twenty-five homes are located in, in, below the, under the plate. I liked that it's highlighted, again, that brings it up, you have those properties, there was a typo in there. I hate it, I will bring it up, I'll bring it up some other time.
Yeah, I already seen that.
Oh, you did see that one?
Trust me.
Our pipes, alright.
That I gave it.
On page thirty.
Is there still a review going on on a piece of brook between Route five and ninety-one, behind all those houses back down in there? The brook over here, was there a study going on? Is some work gonna be done to it?
Route five and where?
The brook that comes, the, the, the channel, the pond, the brook, the brook that comes into the pond, yeah.
Freshwater brook, is there a study going on?
Wasn't there some action coming up, or? Maybe dredging, or?
Maybe through engineering, I'm just not remembering which.
I know there's been a request to go underneath the culvert there and clean out the junk.
Mm-hmm.
I know.
I thought the town was working on something, uh, to make improvements to that brook, through stream.
I have to ask. I have to ask.
You know, the issues we're having with O'Hare, with the inch errors.
I know what you're talking about, but I'm not sure if there's actually anything ongoing currently, or whether it's in the past.
Yeah, that's.
I know that we are looking at, um, natural, uh, let's see, what is? It, we're, we are looking at possible means of, uh, flood mitigation throughout freshwater brook watershed.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, there's nothing, it's, they're just gonna recommend implementation strategies, so there's no actual implementation going on, and that's, I'm meeting on that next week as well.
So just a recommendation coming, but no action?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, it's something that's coming from natural resources rather than.
Well, that would be a study that we, we want, we want to work at, because there is a problem.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Even I've talked about it many times.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything, anything else on twenty-nine? Page thirty. Page thirty, the only recommendation I have is I'd like to see something else highlighted, only because I would like to make sure that any resident who picks this up and strikes it right in the face. I'm in the middle of the page, the part that says, in Enfield, approximately five thousand one hundred sixty acres, or twenty-three percent of the town, are classified as inland wetlands or watercourses. I'd like that highlighted, so people really understand how much of our land falls under that category. Is there a? Is everybody, is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have an issue with that, I wonder, is there, um, and, and did I miss it, like, is there maybe like a section where we kind of like could like highlight the, the different, like, aspect, like in the, in the previous section, it was like, oh, this, this percentage of land is, is reserved for agriculture, this percentage of land is wetlands, like, is that, is that, I, I'm, I'm just a bit volatile here, is that something that, like, we want to highlight in like a diagram or something? I don't know if that would provide, uh.
Wouldn't that be in the maps? In the map section?
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
Weapon maps, it's garbage.
I think he's developing that, they haven't finished the mapping yet.
Oh, I see, alright, let's see what that's coming, yeah.
No, no, the, the map, yeah, the map.
Yeah, don't, don't lose the thought, let's see if that's coming from Don. Anything else on page thirty? Page thirty-one? Page thirty-two? Well, again, I have something, I, I've been around a long time, maybe too long, I've never heard of Shaker Heights Water Company. Frank, have you ever heard of Shaker Heights Water Company?
I've never heard of it.
You, you, Jimmy, you have?
Yeah, it was, it was only a few houses.
Number.
Still.
Where, where are you?
Top of page thirty-two.
Were they privately owned, were they ex-lanterns?
Yeah, non-ex-lanterns, yeah, non-ex-lanterns.
Yeah.
So there is such a company?
I don't think it existed, yeah.
So, I, I, I would recommend.
I'm special, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Now, now, now I know what you're talking about, my gosh, yes.
Yeah, now, I think that, what, we used to be that, it's not has it.
As a lay bottom, yeah, so we can.
Think about that one.
Yeah, thank you very much. Anything on page thirty-two? Page thirty-three? Twice. Page thirty-four? Thirty-five? Thirty-six?
Five thirty, actually.
But it's not in order, so I'm not even looking at it.
Oh, it's in order.
No, it's not. We're just looking at it.
That's the first, this isn't what's accurate.
Yeah, I think that was the.
Oh, yeah, I know, but I, but I still made notes.
Oh, you can have, we're looking at, I, I got it right here live.
Okay, I think that page number is just thrown.
And we keep going, page thirty-eight. Page thirty-nine? Page forty? Forty-one? Forty-two? Like, uh, page, I'll, I'll stop on forty-two because that's where it ends. Everybody caught up?
No.
Okay. You want me to lead us back up to the page?
Uh, just on page thirty-nine.
Sure.
Increase in number of and location of community gardens.
Yeah.
I wanted to just emphasize that we should locate them especially in proximity to higher density housing developments.
Okay.
We found that those that are not near those are failing.
Okay. That'd be fine, yeah.
Did they, I mean, this summer. I mean, now, so I saw a lot of the community gardens not even being used once.
That's my point.
Because they're right in front of Thompsonville, so.
Um, so Thompsonville was almost full, but because we had developed other ones, some people have left and gone to other places.
And a complaint that I heard. And I was like, oh, you gotta tell them, tell them. They weren't happy with the person that was heading the, they felt that they weren't getting. The help that you needed for their garden.
This year or last year?
This year. This year, that the person wasn't communicating with them well. And it could be a personality thing.
You can um.
I'm just saying, and I'm.
You can notify the, the first light ones for last.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I do that.
And it still comes back to me, you know, twenty years since East Winter. Um, it's on manager's office. They are overseeing the community gardens now.
The first person who did, did the community gardens.
Lori, Lori was fabulous and she, because she wanted to do it, so she put in a lot of her own time.
And they said we sure, they, they were disappointed. And I'm like, well, you gotta come on, can't tell me, you gotta.
They've gotta call the town manager's office.
I said, don't tell me, I can't fix it.
Okay, so we're gonna add. Anything else you wanna add? Is that?
No, not on it.
Page forty-one? Forty-two? Can I add another suggestion for highlighting? Um, I think it's, this is probably the most important because I wanna make sure that. Anyone on town council when they read this sees this loud and clear. I think this needs to be highlighted. Recent changes right in the middle of, of the page, recent changes in the state zoning laws for the required zoning for really for fair housing. It seems everything must plan for housing and zone for housing. I think that needs to be clearly, I have to bowl that and hide, you know, and put it all in capitals. Um, so this way they understand that. Things are changing, whether they like it or not. And I'm saying that from having sat there many years and can you sat there also, so sometimes you just have to be, it has to come right up front of you. Any changes in forty-three? Forty-four? Forty-five?
I don't know. I, I, I'm forty-five. I, I, I brought this up, I, I had asked Don when he was here about uh mention of, or, or the lack of mention of ADs. But I know we've already discussed that. Um, I, it, it, it hasn't, it wasn't really like called out, at least not by name in the plan transit oriented development, just developing around the train station especially. Uh, so, so even if, even if we, even if it's kind of buzzwordy, I think it's an important buzzword for us to have.
Yeah.
Uh, in the plan, so, so I'd like to see that included. Um, that's, that's mixed use, not just residential. Um, and then I, I made a note.
Do you have that, Lori, or?
Yep.
Okay.
And then I made a note on uh. Uh, the, the last bullet on the point was a lot of multifamily housing in the BRVP and, and I one zoning districts. And, and I, and I noted the exclusion of the BL zone, which I know are kind of scattered. I don't know if those were kind of the uh, kind of like those spot zone ones. Uh, I, I, cause, cause some of them are scattered.
You think they're much are, but there are also larger clusters.
Yeah, they, well, and some of them are, are in the uh, the Route five, uh, right here, right here in Thompsonville, North Thompsonville, I know.
So do you want to include BL?
I, I think it's an opportunity to look at from the mixed use perspective, not necessarily like mat scale, but you know, especially for town block. Units above shops, things like that. I think that there's potential.
There's some.
Yeah, there are some, yeah.
Since, since we're, now we're diving into a little bit more into detail on the housing, which we're gonna get to in more detail, so let's, let's stop for a second. Just to make sure that at least the seven of us are kind of in the same triangle, in the same direction if possible, or majority of us are. So what Chris is uh basically recommending is that we allow multifamily housing. Which means, of course, we have to change our zoning ways and be public here. It's not as easy as this. We allow multifamily housing in our BR. BP. BL and I one zones. Again, we're, we're putting this in papers. That's why I wanna make sure everybody kind of understands where, where we possibly might be heading. This is a guide. It's not, we can change it if we don't have, but if we're stating this and Lori's intent is to pull this out. And also use some of this as our housing plan. We gotta make sure we're putting in here something we're at least gonna attempt to achieve with good faith. I guess that's my point, good faith. We might, we could change our mind later, but I just wanna make that point. So, so far at least, everybody's, at that point is pretty comfortable. I see no objection, okay, fine, great.
I'd like to uh see that first paragraph under strategies for improvement, bolded. I don't know, I think that's key on forty-five, page forty-five. In accordance with the plans, I actively seek to encourage law, promote modern diversified housing stock.
Oh, right there.
Yeah, the very, the very first.
Yeah.
Item, the strategies.
It basically, I think, describes the whole goal.
Yeah.
You know, right there. And I think that's, I think that's gonna be one of our priorities as we plan.
And I, I, I really like the way this is put together because it gets to another issue we were talking about. This includes encouraging the renovation of existing housing stock, especially in Thompsonville.
Absolutely.
And construction of new housing stocks, something we just talked about a half hour ago.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, I think that that whole paragraph was put well, together well.
So I, I actually was going to say, um, in accordance with eight dash thirty J, planning and zoning commissions must. Add that word must actively seek to encourage, allow and promote modern diversified housing stock. So this says zoning commission actively seek, there's, there's no.
It's missing a word, yeah. Or. Yeah, I think that's good.
Are you okay with that? Nothing is gonna happen.
That's true.
Anything else on forty-five? Forty-six? Last bullet point. Which we've already talked about previously, that is. We did the same. Um, create in, in our zoning provision.
Ten housing slash units.
Yeah, yeah, we're looking for more detail. We must go back to the other ones. And be in, in accordance with the.
Yeah.
Section that.
And then I was, and then my two points, down zone existing non-performing subdivisions and create smaller open state subdivisions.
And do we want?
Then add the cortical housing plan.
Maybe you apologize, I said, my fault. And just, there's a, there's a, the end of that, create inclusion or zoning provision, in this particular one, there's an extra sentence, I believe, that's not in the other one.
Right.
I mean, do we want to promote, and again, being Dale's advocate. A provision that could include a fee in lieu of affordable housing provision to provide funding for the housing trust fund. Is that something the planning zoning commission wants to have in their document? In that, in that form? That's something we want to promote.
I don't think it's necessarily all our responsibility.
In previous applications that we've had, it would have been beneficial.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I, I can't remember specifics, but it was an application. If they had given us fees in lieu of, it would have been money that we could have put in our power. Um, it was, it was, it's just something that we could consider because we don't do it.
Mm-hmm.
And if we want money to give to people to help fix houses or buy their first home.
True.
This would be a way to fund it.
Yeah.
Without taking it out of the town budget. And I'm not saying every application would be. But in certain ones, and I can't remember.
Is that something that we put in the zoning regulation?
We already have these.
Something like.
Yeah.
And it, it was more or less a landscaping thing. It was what it was. It was just, you know.
I mean, and, and, I mean, it's, it is, I mean, it could include, and then that's like, I don't know if we can say it like any softer. I think it's more just like a. Consider exploring it, right? Um, so, so with the wording as it is, I don't, I don't have an issue with that. I, I think it, you know, it could be worth it.
Oh, it says create the trust fund.
And right above it is establish, right above it is establishing a housing trust fund.
How low do you wanna go there? Trust funds and? Who's gonna monitor that?
That's one of those things that could be your promotion and your housing plan, so.
But again, if you promote a housing plan, these, we really, we really have to be, with faith actively try to start to create one.
Well, not this year. That could be in year nine.
Very good, lady, very good.
I learned.
Well, there's priority items and there's always something to occur in a couple of years, and that's how it's actually listed.
Yeah. Year nine.
That wouldn't be us. We can, we can create one anyways, but that should be.
This is not all for planning and zoning.
Well, that's true. It's not off of planning.
This is for.
That's true.
Town council.
To create.
We may create a permitting process.
And endorse the creation of.
Or something.
Instead of creating affordable housing trust fund.
A housing trust fund, create an affordable housing trust fund to raise and capture funding. That doesn't. Just because these tasks are in here doesn't mean that the planning and zoning commission is responsible for that. I mean, that, that, that would be something that would be implemented by the town also. If they don't want to see that in there, then they can.
They can take it out.
They can, they can say, we're not gonna adopt this, and this is.
Yeah.
Not something I wanna get involved in.
No, me either. We're gonna present it to them.
No drug smoking guy.
You gotta remember, these are not all the planning and zoning tasks. These are multiple.
And they might decide to take that out.
Right.
Okay.
You're gonna put that on the council.
Yeah, not us. No, no, no.
Just a point on that page.
Right. Yeah, hold on, please.
Good morning, guys.
Good question.
Yep, yeah, one of, but the second bullet point just goes back to what we were just talking about on the previous page, allow mixed use development in BRVP. They, they two bullets kinda go together. But if we're allowing multifamily in BL as well, then that will also come in.
Well, they're, they're two different things. Multifamily and mixed use are two different things.
Well, mixed use residential.
Well, multifamily is multifamily housing, mixed use is multifamily plus mixed commercial. So they are two different things, so you want.
Talking about.
Yeah, so you want to see allow mixed use developments in BRVP and BL zones?
Well, yeah, I, I, I could see us considering. I mean, again, we're, we're, I mean, we use.
Business locals, again, business local is. You know, almost, almost like a, I hate to use the word, I hate to use the keep losing word spot zones. That's not fair, but.
Well, BL, my understanding of BL is. And of all your BR, your, your B zones, if you wanna call them PGBR, you know, is that it was a hierarchy. So the BLs were really at the low end, kind of the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
Kind of the BL services, kind of.
There's law.
Go get a loaf of bread, kind of.
I mean, I think, I think those are the exact type of businesses that kind of can, can have that residential above shot. And again, on our, our Route five, right here in Thompsonville, North Thompsonville, we have those already.
We do, yeah, we do. But a lot of them are isolated and the scale of them is, there's one that has some scale to it next to the school. Out uh. School center of town. JFK?
Mountain, are you?
Oh, JFK. There's a, there's a, a BL out Rafia.
Oh, that's the.
Yeah, that, that's a fairly large.
The package store in the corner.
Probably for the BLs, but most of the BLs are small-ish, so you can consider it. And if there's, if there's an opportunity that where it's.
I, yeah, I'm not, I'm not suggesting like large scale, but I, I think that there can be opportunity.
Or apartment above a deli or.
The thing, what comes into play too with those is the parking. We have to, you know.
Yeah.
We have to tailor our parking to, or, or some exceptions or something.
Renalties. There's sort of a apartment above that and jig gates.
No, I agree, they're.
There's an apartment above that.
I'm all for those, but how do, you know, we have to make sure we plug the parking.
But seem to be consensus to add BL to that.
Was it two, two parking spaces for every unit and resident? You know, I mean, we have to plug all that in.
When, when I look at these things, you could add, consider allowing mixed use. You could add, consider. To, to, to every one of these sentences.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not that you have to do it, it's that you should consider it, deliberate it and figure out, is this right or is this not?
Right.
And, and just a point about uh accuracy there, um, it does mention about reducing required parking to one and a quarter spaces per one bedroom unit. So we already are, are limited from uh.
Public act.
Twenty-nine. So that, that's just not accurate.
That, I, I know, I've made that note too.
Okay.
Okay, I think there was some consensus to add BL to that one. Anything else on forty-six? Forty-seven, forty-eight? Forty-nine? Well, that's the same thing. Again, I had, I hired, I highlighted forty-nine because again, we were, you know, remove barriers to investment. We've already talked about that to death. Um, I highlighted also create a well-defined economic development program, you know, we've kind of added that. Caveout about possibly having someone a little more dedicated to that. Anything else on forty-nine or fifty? Fifty-two? I did have something there that does need to be removed. Uh, we can't be promoting EMS facility since that's a referendum item. So that whole sentence should be taken off. He has this example. Need defines the facilities required to adequately deliver town services and he has, for example, a modern police EMS facility. With adequate office space, we gotta take that out.
It's not a referendum.
It's not a referendum. We can't be putting this document.
No, no.
Can't be promoting anything. Wasn't a referendum, we could leave it in.
No, can't be in there.
Can't be in there. Anything else on fifty-two? Fifty-three? Again, some of the stuff, Lori, again, the fifty-three, I'm not gonna go back because they were things we got in the synopsis and the first thing to get, you know. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Fifty-four?
Um, just thinking, go back to that EMS thing. Is that something we may, may want to leave because the town, I mean, the council is, is working on that now?
No, they can't because it's a, it's a referendum item. As individual people, we can certainly support the EMS. Right. As a body, we cannot because by law, it's a referendum, the town cannot show or any bias towards a referendum item. So we shouldn't remove this.
But. They're doing it, so we're, it's, I think it's a good thing that they're doing it.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Right, but it shows that.
They're stating it, you're on TV.
No, 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 I think the show, in this document, it shows that this community is um, is, is all about public safety and wants to make sure we have the best for our.
If it wasn't a referendum, I mean, we could leave it in.
Yeah, I think that's probably when he wrote this.
Yeah, yeah, before it was a referendum. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I think that's, well, how it got in there.
Absolutely.
Prior to it becoming, you know, on a ballot.
Absolutely, and, and.
But it shows that the community.
If you want to put this in after the November eighth election, that's probably fine too.
Yeah, yeah.
But as of today, we shouldn't.
I think that's why it came up. I think it just shows that the community was for public safety.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, disagree.
So just on page fifty-six, just a, a, a FYI, um. We've been trying to find the actual sewer service area now. But um, actually Donald has come up with a solution and he's working on creating one, so that should be.
Talk to Mike Drum, he knows.
Oh, Mike Drum.[1770.84] Oh, Mike Crone. He knows everything. He's retired.
Keep it calm. Trust me.
I don't know. I know it's why.
He knows where all the damn bodies are in Enfield. Trust me. You need to know where a septic system is. He knows it.
That was, that was not an easy battle to get sewer system put in this town. Back in the late sixties. That was political, community battle.
If you build it, they will come.
Basically, it really pitted the, the people who lived here before in the Castle area, who already had sewers versus those who moved in for other communities who didn't. Not politically easy to get the sewer system built in this town. I remember clearly.
All right.
Fifty-seven.
Oh, just a, a small wording on fifty-six, sorry. In the, in the introduction, it mentions about the second sentence and second paragraph, for example, the conditions of roads, the design and maintenance of sidewalks. I think instead of design, I'd rather have availability. I, I don't know exactly what it's kind of going for with the design of sidewalks. I think the more critical issue is whether sidewalks exist or not. I think that's, I think that may be the intent of it, just the wordism.
That sidewalk can be concrete. I know, I used the wrong word. It's cement.
Concrete versus asphalt.
Yeah.
Supposed to all be concrete, not asphalt.
We have codes for that.
Yeah.
What I'm just saying is, I think that's where the design.
But even so, I think.
When you say design, you mean like the rampings for handicap and accessible? I think that's all code related. I think that's all in there.
Well, it's just saying what contributes to the image of the community and the, and the value of real property. So that, that's the context. I mean, we could keep design in there, but I think availability.
I think, I think it sounds better. It makes more sense, I think, availability than design.
I was just thinking of design.
I would think design and availability.
Design, availability.
There we go. It's a good compromise. There we go. Moving along. All right, fifty-seven. We're moving along. No, please don't do that. Don't do that. Come on. Fifty-seven. Fifty, we were chatting. Fifty-eight.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm fifty-seven. There is a mention of Route 191. I never heard of it. I looked on the map. I'm not sure if that's a good view.
I think it's supposed to be.
I ninety-one.
I ninety-one.
It's under minor arterials. Route ninety-one, Route 151.
It's one ninety-one. There's a twenty-one forty that's going out of the road.
Yeah. That's right.
And then on the parking, I don't know if there should be a mention of, because we do have, we do have a handful of public lots in Thompsonville. You know, it specifically calls out private. Yeah. I, I don't know if there, if there is a, you know, a need for us to mention about that. It's a resource, right? It's a resource that we have.
Yeah, most people.
Public spots.
Okay. Anything else? Fifty-eight?
Fifty-nine. Well, kind of, kind of on that same note, I want with the public parking, just mention about shared parking. I know we do have it in our, in our regulations to encourage it possible. I think that's important. I think the, and if you want, I can, I can write up maybe a blurb about, again, something near and dear to my heart and the alternative modes of transportation. I don't think it, I, I think it can add a little more about the benefit to the town. I think the town has a lot to gain from it. Decreased auto traffic, increased health, increased availability.
So you want to take a shot at that paragraph? Please do. Thank you, Chris.
Shared parking is basically where you have two uses that have different use characteristics in terms of their peak hours. And so therefore they can kind of take advantage of that and share the parking. So you don't have like X plus Y.
We already do that. Like a church parking lot might be utilized for special events or something like that.
Okay, that's what I thought it was, but I figured I'd ask because we already do that in town.
Whether you like it or not.
Yes.
Anything on fifty-nine?
Sixty. Sorry, I'm fifty-nine. Again, a, a topic near and dear to my heart. So on the, the public sidewalk section, I would rename that pedestrian infrastructure. Because there's more to it than sidewalks. It, it's not really mentioned here, but crosswalks, pedestrian crossing signals, other pedestrian amenities. I think limiting it to public sidewalks, I don't think is doing it justice. And then there is, there is no mention about bicycle infrastructure. I mean, what, I mean, we can add it. There's mention in the complete street plan about building out bicycle infrastructure, even if it's shared lanes. So I think that's worth probably having, again, public sidewalk, like one sentence. I think it could be worth having, you know, two sentences saying that, hey, as a town, we want to encourage different means of transportation. This is one of the ways to do it.
I think everyone had some consensus on it. I'm not sure Lori got all that, or?
I have it on the consent.
I'm looking at Frank here, and I'm, I'm trying to, so one of the things I caught here is Enfield has a good sidewalk network, much constantly commercialized, where there are areas of gap. Is there, is there gaps in our sidewalk in Thompsonville? I mean, there's some broken.
I mean, where all the work that was done, like John was mentioning before, that was all improved. Everything that was broke was fixed. I can't think of anything on top of.
Except for the roads I haven't touched. There are always going to be some broken sidewalks, some areas.
Then you guys are talking about the commercial.
Right, because then it goes the west, the west side of Freshwater and Bovard.
But that's not Thompsonville.
Right.
It's Thompsonville and the commercial area.
There's commercial.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think that point is more about the commercial area.
Which we have in our regulations and they can do it. Sidewalks.
Definitely, definitely gaps and definitely lacks and pedestrian. In a lot of the commercial area, like one, one whole side of one ninety.
I think two twenty, which we talked about, which we're going to continue to bring up. Which, I have a question for staff who are on that sidewalk. If you don't know, that's fine. I'm sorry. I don't like to ask questions that I'm not prepared for. But I thought I heard, or it's understanding, about a year ago, wasn't the sidewalk supposed to be continued all the way out to Tazanuto Community College? I thought that was approved.
I think they're working on that.
Is that part, is that part of the same study that she brought front of us?
No.
Okay.
No, that, that's a traffic impact study. So they could provide implementable fixes as they might be in the future. There is, I'd have to talk to John Cabibbo or Donald Nunes. I think that that sidewalk is underway, like in the planning stages.
Okay, okay.
I, I'm just not, I'm just not positive.
Are they going to draw for approval for that or is that the town going to?
I, I don't recall where the funding is coming from. It's somewhere I remember hearing that that was going to go in.
Because I knew there was, we're talking about those gaps, and I knew there was been some talk of extending that sidewalk on that southern side out to Tazanuto.
That would be a state project, correct?
I would think.
It's a state project.
Yeah. I would think it would be drawn and be approved.
Yeah.
That's a state road.
I, I remember hearing something about it, but I don't recall.
It was in some kind of a referendum, but it got taken out. And that's why the state's checking it out now.
I don't remember. But all right, one question. We'll try to.
That's what the state right away.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. All right, sorry. Didn't mean to deviate. Page sixty. Sixty-one. Sixty-three. Sixty-four. Sixty-five. Sixty-six.
Oh, wait, is that kind of sixty-one?
Sixty-one?
Yeah. I'm, I'm not sure how to do this, but the access management requirements incorporate those in the zoning. I think that's really important. I'm not sure how we could make it, you know, more important, bold it or something like that. Because, you know, I complained about the cuts on Hazard Avenue before.
Definitely.
It's really bad. I think we should emphasize the access management aspect of zoning regulations as we go along here. So I, I'm not sure how we do that. Put it someplace else or just bold it? Maybe just.
So you basically sense that I'm doing something more.
To limit access man, to limit access.
Making that really an objective for it. Lori's highlighting it, so.
To improve access management.
I know that in the implementation section, it does vary priorities. So maybe that's.
That's right. It makes it a priority. We're all on the same page.
Which leads to that. Can I just deviate for one more quick question, question for you? Wait, we're all here? No, really, because.
Of course.
You know, we, we talked about one applicant who wanted to have that special construction entrance. And we allowed a special construction entrance. Even though they were trying to get permitting, we've put that offer now because we don't allow that in our regulations. So how did they allow that truck access for Home Depot off of Elm Street? There's a, a truck.
That, that's not in the PP zone.
It's not in the PP. Okay, okay. That's, that's why that was allowed.
I think that's also a fire lane. Get behind there.
Okay. Okay, this Chris guy, I was trying to.
See, that's just like what they're asking. Different zone. Thank you. Okay? By the way, the construction access is almost.
Yes, that's what I was thinking of because I drove by today. And down to me, I saw one of them just like that Home Depot. That's, that's, thank you so much. All right. Page sixty-six. Sorry for deviating, but thank you.
I think I had a point on, oh. This was, so this kind of goes back to some of the points I made on, on infrastructure, but this is actually the first, this was actually the first point in the plan where it actually mentions the creation of bike lanes. So that probably ought to go, like I was saying, in the infrastructure section.
On page sixty-six, Chris?
Sixty-six, yep. Yeah, and the, the last bullet of, and social sustainability. Yeah, the creation of bike lanes and adding safer crosswalks. So both those are really key. But this is the first place in the plan that mentions both of them. So again, so in my opinion, let's emphasize them by putting them in the infrastructure section.
Anything else on sixty-six? Sixty-seven. The only thing I have is seventy to take that thing out about the twenty-twenty joint facilities committee. Let's take it out of there too. On page sixty-seven. At the top.
What, first paragraph?
Twenty-twenty, the joint facilities committee, you can take it out. We have no verification that that listing exists.
I have a question on sixty-seven. Yeah, this, this one kind of confused me. And, and again, this is probably something I, I don't know if it didn't come up in Don's meeting. Two especially attractive locations for solar and storage microgrids are near concentrations of low-income housing and near transit hubs. So that, that statement confused me, honestly. From, from like the transit part, I don't know why we would want to build solar facilities in such valuable real estate. Why we'd want to encourage it. And I'm not sure the, the motivation for desiring it around low-income housing. So I don't.
Need clarification.
Yeah, at the, at the very least clarification to justify keeping that in there. Because at least with the transit part, I, I don't think that, that belongs.
Solar panels, why would it be a really benefit local area?
It depends on the program. Most of them actually, like east ones are servicing, I think, Enfield and summers. And the ones in Enfield are servicing like Massachussetts. It's like, it really is.
Broadport is servicing Vernon.
Yeah, it, it's, yeah, it just because it's just, it's just like points that are servicing a different area.
Yeah, it's a movie area.
Yeah, that's just whoever signs on to that program at that time.
What they get the credit for.
Yeah, I mean, it may, it may be like referencing like rooftop solar or like, but, but like it calls out microgrids, which are, which are a much larger scale than.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, anything else on sixty-seven? I think the rest of that paragraph, I think everyone's pretty happy with Lori, just that. Sixty-eight. Again, there's another reference to that revisit the joint facility on page sixty-eight too. Strategies for improvement built upon. It's, it's, you know, same thing as in the beginning of the document. Sixty-nine. Seventy-one. We're almost done, everybody. Really, believe me, we're almost done. Seventy-two. Seventy-five.
Seventy-three.
Seventy, going back up to go to far.
Oh, I've written, this is from last meeting's discussion. Consider hiring a frontline consultant like Connecticut Main Street focused on development in Thompsonville. And that kind of goes along with like the Ray Warren position.
Seventy-five. Seventy-six. Let's skip over to pictures. Pretty color anyways. Eighty-three, implementation. I just had a couple of things here, Lori, implementation, because there, there, we don't, we don't have some of these things. So whenever you get there.
I'm here.
Implementation overview, when it talks about by other town board, in the second paragraph, commissions such as the town council, board of finance, we don't have a board of finance.
Cutting pace.
Where, where are you?
Eighty-three, implementation overview.
Oh, oh, I'm looking down here. Okay.
We don't have a board of finance.
Yeah, you're right.
And then also on page eighty-four in the capital budget, which used to be one of my favorite things to help manage, do that. Didn't miss that. We don't have a board of selectmen and a board of finance. We have a town manager and a town council.
We have a town council and director of finance.
More cutting pace.
I, I caught that one. I didn't catch the first one.
Anybody else on page eighty-three or eighty-four? Eighty-six. Now, is there something where we want to stop tonight? Or you guys want to go through the implementation schedule? Or do you want to wait and come back to this particular one? Ninety, well, yeah, the rest is something, yeah.
Okay, and this, this is where I have, I have to change, establish a P O C D implementation committee to keep track on progress of goals. Or something along those words.
What page is that?
We're on eighty-six. That, that was my suggestion.
Oh, that's true.
Now, do, I mean, do we want to, do we want to go into this tonight? Or do we want to break and maybe tackle this a little bit Thursday? Something that I'm going to say.
You can decide on those tasks and the priorities almost at any time.
And we really don't have to decide.
No, that's, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. We could, now's a good spot to break or?
Yeah, in fact, you know, the public conversation and the council process and things might inform.
Okay, what do you say, breath here? Does anyone want to add anything more tonight?
The only thing that I ever want me to correct is page ninety-four, the last paragraph, fourth line. It should be I-gash ninety-one, not I-zero.
I forgot that too.
That was the only thing. So, like that.
All right, so the next plan is we, I don't want to cancel Thursday night's meeting. We digested a lot tonight. Chris is going to work on some things, so maybe, maybe you'll have a couple of ready for Thursday that you could talk about. So we'll meet at six o'clock for, I know.
I won't be there, but I'll be at seven o'clock.
So we'll meet at six Thursday. Anything else you guys want to bring up after, you think about this over the next couple of days? And Chris might have a couple of things he was willing to work up for us that we can discuss and add or not add. After that, we're in pretty good shape.
Got a lot of work done.
Got a lot of work done tonight. Any, any, anyone want to add anything else? Well, I want to thank, really, I want to thank staff too for doing this, for describing all this. And we got through a lot tonight. Thank you very much. If any of the past commission members are watching this, thank you too also for getting us to this position where we could do this tonight, so.
And the P O C D steering.
Yes, I meant, that's the past commission, P O C, that's what I meant, the P O C D steering commission. We wouldn't, you know, they didn't do all this work with them. And we wouldn't, you know, if they didn't do all this work with Don and staff, we wouldn't be here. Yeah, we wouldn't be where we were tonight. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley, seconded by Vice Chairman DeGrado, adjourn. All those in favor, sing about it, say aye. Records show was unanimous to adjourn. I, I don't know what.
Nine oh one, I think this is correct.
Eight fifty-seven.
Eight fifty-seven, between eight fifty-seven and nine.